Ken Willard will be missing for a few minutes. He had to run across the street to the Capitol and he'll be joining us shortly. As we start the afternoon, I want to thank our, the board members once again for their patience and their professionalism this morning. Good job, thank you. I'm sorry about the lateness of where we are. The first order of business this afternoon is to have a report from the Coalition of Innovative Districts. God, we heard about them this morning. But that's not the report. This is about an annual, one of our semi-annual reports that we'll receive. And with us today is Dr. Watson. Dr. Watson, you're on.
Thank you, and good afternoon. I'm gonna hopefully open the right one. Appreciate the opportunity. What we'd like to do is a bi-annual report. As you know, as we put our bylaws together and worked with the State Board of Education, one of the important things was that we report the progress that we're making, or lack thereof, at least twice a year, and we report once a year to the legislature. So I want to just take you through a little bit of where we're at, what's going on, and answer any questions that you might have. As I think you're aware, there are six innovative school districts. The law originally called for up to 10%, which would be 28 or 29. We've had seven school districts inquire, and one withdrew their application after having some discussion. But there have been six since the law went into effect two years ago. And so these six set on what's called the Coalition Board. But I think what's important also to know that as we came forward, Bev Mortimer and I, about a year ago, to the State Board and said, you know, there's a lot of controversy surrounding this law. We certainly want to be partners with the State Board of Ed. And two members of the State Board of Ed are voting members on the Coalition Board, as is the interim commissioner. So we have nine total voting members. A third of those are seated at the table, and two-thirds of those are not. I want to say that Tom Trigg at Blue Valley is out of state today, so he apologizes for not being here. Bev Mortimer is actually representing the Coalition, was asked to be on a panel at the Coalition with some legislators in Wichita today, and so that was a conflict. And Mark Crawford just simply couldn't make it from Hugaton. I don't know if the plane wouldn't go, or how we were gonna get Mark here. So you have three of us here today, and we're happy to be here and share with you what we've been doing. This is a summation of the law. Again, in a very open-ended law, as you know, very controversial, basically should be exempt from all laws, rules, and regulations that are applicable, with some exceptions. And you certainly know the exceptions, and we work through those. That open-endedness leaves a lot of people uneasy, including us at times. But I'll talk about that. It really is a difference between kind of an innovation think tank, you know, and a body that has to be in charge of rules and regulations. And so we've taken that responsibility extremely serious. And all of our meetings, as you are aware, are open meetings, open records. And I'm so excited about the six, the other five superintendents, because there's not a thing that goes on that we don't take extremely serious. And as we take a look at this awesome responsibility that the legislature and you gave us as we move forward. This is a little bit of a summary of what we did in year one, which is a lot of organizational things. As you know, anytime you put together something new, there's nothing there, including bylaws. So we had to write those, and I will tell you, Dina Horst was masterful at helping us with that, and so thank you. She really did a good job of helping organize that in a way that made sense. I'm not gonna read all this to you, but you can kind of see from February to February how we came about. First, there were two, Concordia and McPherson, chosen by the legislature and the governor. And then we added to that Kansas City, Kansas, Hugaton, and Blue Valley. And then Marysville's been the last school district to come in. We won't entertain any other applications until we get to December of 2015. But I will tell you that while the law says 28 or 29, because we have, is it 286 spread? 283 school districts? So however you round that to 10%, and then 10% of focus and priority, which probably take the number close to 50 in total, we don't have people beating down the doors lined up saying, "How can we be one of these?", because it's a lot of work. And while we think it'll expand over time, it certainly, as again, we set it six currently. This is the core of what we're about. And it drives everything we think about. We've had some people come as visitors when we were having this broad discussion, and they were so excited, then they came back, and we were having to deal with waivers and things, and they're going, "Well, this wasn't nearly as exciting when we were talking about the broad issue." We're simply trying to raise the success of our students after they leave us. And of course, as you know, we've been on a vision tour, trying to define that, you know, on a broader scale, but that's what we're trying to do. And much of our work in the future will be trying to define this in ways that we can capture accurate data while holding privacy. As you know, I mean, privacy prevents us from much of this data, like who goes into a job, who goes into the military, and yet, how do we use some of that data, have an accurate data while we're going forward? But this is what we'll be about. And you know, through a couple of visiting stops here in Topeka, Carolyn introduced us, and we talked about moving away from student achievement to student success. That achievement is a one part, you know, of that student success, and Brad talks about that a lot as you think about state assessments. So this is what drives us. And so often, people say, "Well, what if..." I always use two examples. McPherson, because I'm there right now, I've been there for 22 years, and Coffeyville, because that's my hometown. So Robert Morton, if he's listening, I'm gonna use Coffeyville as the example, and this is certainly, I'm just picking one out of the air. If Coffeyville came forward and said, "Hey, we want to be an innovative district, we just want to waive a bunch of stuff." We would say, "No, you've gotta have a plan in action around student success. Your board has to have already approved that plan. You've gotta have community support." And now you're looking at, "Well, maybe there's some things we'd like to take a look at that might be getting in the way." We take that responsibility extremely serious, and so I really wanted to let you know, this is really our focus as we go forward. One of the things that we're in every one of the six applications were assessments to a different level. I like to joke that, and it's true, Blue Valley, you know, last year, hashtag was "Beat Singapore" on the PISA test of international comparisons. They did that. So now it's "Beat Finland." They want to be the number one school district in the world, and they're using the international standard of PISA, you know, to do that. A lot of our districts have been using ACT assessments and work keys, and so we want some flexibility in assessment. You all know, you don't have authority to grant that. That's a federal requirement. So we've written that into the federal requirement, and we're waiting to answer on that, and you know, we don't know what the federal government will do. Maybe some days we're not as optimistic as others on flexibility, but that's just one thing, as we've talked about, is how do we have assessments that are meaningful to students and go forward? Before I talk about McPherson, I want to kind of give you an example of kind of what the Coalition is about and what it is, because I think there's a lot of misunderstanding. So it came about as this "Go off and do whatever you want." And there's still some of that. But as we came and partnered with the State Board, and you said, "Yeah, let's put you underneath us," we became kind of a think tank innovation zone. So I was talking to one of the managers out of Hospira, a pharmaceutical company in McPherson, which is being bought by Pfizer in the next few weeks, and they said, "You know, we have a research and development arm, and they try out new drugs and new combinations and new ways to deliver." And he said, "Almost about 50% of those never see the light of day. But we try them, but they're just not worth it." We really are that arm. Now, we are the, to try things that we think will improve student success, that maybe get in the way. We're not state policy. You can't scale us. That's something that you would do, or a legislature would do, but not us. And so there's always this tension, I think, in any organization, between a body whose role is to have regulation and protocol, and make sure that it applies to everyone and oversees everyone, and then has this little group off to the side, whose job is to do just the opposite, right? Experiment and try things related to, "Will that improve student success?" So we have waived for Concordia accreditation, allowed them, and you agree to this, to go with Advanced Ed. Many of you will remember that used to be North Central, but it's Advanced Ed. And who does that apply to? Concordia? Nobody else in the state. And we will report to you how that's working, so that at some point, you would decide, "Is that a good idea to let other people do that? Or is it not a good idea?" It's not our decision, but that's part of, you know, what we would do, just to take a look at that. We're paying for college tuition. You know, there's a law that says that school districts couldn't pay for college tuition. You know, some of our districts, especially with a large number of poor students, said it'd be helpful if we could pay for some dual credit. Well, is that something that would be good? We don't know yet. We're in the early stages of looking at those things, but every six months or so, we'll report to you just on those metrics as we go forward. I'm gonna spare you the McPherson discussion, because I think you've heard the McPherson story a lot, but I want to introduce to you Cindy Lane from Kansas City, Kansas, and Bill Mullins from Marysville, as they will walk you through just some of the things that they're doing in their district, and then certainly will stand for questions. Okay? Cindy?
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Great to be here and to talk about the journey of Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools, and how and why we're involved in the Coalition. But let me share with you that joining the Coalition for KCK Public Schools was nothing about waiving regulations. It was all about surrounding us with people who could help us deepen our thinking and do our work better. So I'm gonna back up a little bit and give you some context about the work that we'd been doing, that was put into place long before discussions of the Coalition existed. You may recall our journey. In the mid-'90s, we were failing our kids, absolutely failing. Low percentages of kids were passing the state math and reading test. And the school district entered into a reform called "First Things First" that was all about getting to know our community and our kids at a deeper level, so we could move them to higher levels of success. And that was tremendous work. And we moved from failing our kids to having more than 70% meeting or exceeding standards on the state test. And we have Sumner Academy, who is the number one high school in Kansas, and the 64th best high school ranked consistently for over a decade in the nation. So we have learned a lot, but the question that the board asked the community, and then they asked me, is, "Dr. Lane, is that the best we can do?" And of course, the answer to that was, "Absolutely not." So we began putting in place a college preparatory curriculum, beginning at age four, thinking about every one of our young people, regardless of the fact that 90% of them live in homes that are at the poverty level, that they are college preparatory children. And all of the work that we have done has been focusing on that, which included administering the ACT to all of our 11th graders, and to administering the ACT version of that test to 8th, 9th, and 10th graders, and this will be our fourth year of doing that. We applied for the waiver, as you know, from the Department of Education, and asked that we be held accountable to the ACT assessments, as whether or not we were doing what was needed for our kids. But it's not all about assessments. It's about crafting experiences for our children, so that they truly can paint a picture for where they may end up as adults, meaningful pictures for them. Let me share with you that I often tell this story about a little four-year-old who told our board president, at the time was Gloria Willis, that she wanted to be a dragon when she grew up. Now, we all laughed. Dragon, isn't that cute? But the reality is, if our children want to be dragons, or authors, or doctors, or engineers, or whatever it is, it's our job to put them on a pathway of getting there, right? So she's not gonna be a dragon, but she may be the next author, or the next million-billion-dollar writer-director of a movie. We don't know. But it is our job not to say, "Oh, that's cute, honey, but you can't be that." It's our job to say, "What do we need to know and be able to do to help this child get to their dreams?" So several years ago, we began encouraging our high school kids to take college credit. Last year, more than 40% of all of our high school students took college credit while in high school. 90% of the children at Wyandotte, Wyandotte High School, the most impoverished high school in our state, 90% were admitted to college. 90% of them taking college courses, many of them graduating with 24 and 30 credit hours. Proud of that. And so we moved from now encouraging to where we are with the Coalition work, to now requiring. In front of you, you have two resources. We call our program Diploma Plus. This year, we began with our sixth graders, surrounding them with experiences to help them develop dreams for their futures, to broaden their experiences. So for the sixth graders, who will graduate in 2021, it is no longer encouraged college credit, but it is required. They must graduate with at least one year of college completed, in addition to their high school work, or their technical credential, or at least a 21 on the ACT. And for our students with disabilities, we're working with them to ensure that they have meaningful technical credentials too, as they graduate. Moving from encouraged to require, and moving from some kids to each and every one of our students. So this year, our sixth graders have all been on college campuses, they've all been out in industries, they all have an individual plan of study. Next year, that individual plan of study will become a dashboard, so it's transparent to our families. Where are our students? How are they progressing? What have been the college and career experiences that they're having? And so by the time those young people enter into high school, they will have a wide experiences of the possibilities of careers for their futures, many of which will require the college path, lots of those will also require the technical credential path. So we're very excited about the work Diploma Plus. Each and every student, not some of our kids, graduating fully prepared. The board and I have talked about how excited we will be when we shake the hands of our high school graduates, knowing that they are high school Diploma Plus graduates, fully prepared for their futures. So we joined the Coalition, so we can be surrounded by individuals who can deepen our thinking and help us move forward. Yes, there are some laws and regulations that we would like to talk about and have asked to consider for waivers, one of which Dr. Watson mentioned, paying for college tuition. If we're going to ensure that our kids graduate with at least one year of college completed, we cannot make that promise and then say, "I'm sorry, we don't have the resources to do that." Right now, we're paying for that with philanthropic money, funds that we have been raising, but by the time that those sixth graders are juniors, we need $3.6 million annually to support their college going. So think about that. So that law is important for us to have flexibility around, so we can use whatever resources the community has access to, to pay for that tuition. It's been great work. The families are excited and encouraged, and I can't tell you the kinds of stories we hear from our kids, our young kids, who have never been on a college campus perhaps, or perhaps will be the first person in their family to attend college, and for some, the first person to graduate from high school. So this is transforming individual lives, but I like to remind folks that we are transforming our community. When we do our jobs well, and when our kids graduate Diploma Plus, then I can stand before you and not talk about being the most impoverished community in the state of Kansas, and that that poverty level will go down, because our kids, who are now the leaders of our community, will have the tools they need to move forward. So when you think about KCK, think about Diploma Plus, and the work of the Coalition helps encourage us to keep moving that forward.
I'm Bill Mullins from Marysville. I was before you, just two or three months ago, sharing the information about our application. I'm not gonna, I'm gonna kind of move forward. Just want to kind of give you an update on some things that are happening with us. I want to echo what Cindy said. We got into the Coalition not to wave out of a bunch of things and not try to get around regulations. We wanted to be around people to push our thinking as a district, okay? I'm a first-year superintendent in the district, got a lot of first-year administrators. You know, we identified fairly early that we had some challenges that we needed to address as a community. One of the things that I said to you before, we have Landall Manufacturing in Marysville. We have people from 50 different zip codes that drive to Marysville to work every day. All right? I'd love to be able to attract some of those families to our community. We've got people who live in the outskirts, the edges of our community, that are going to other districts. We want to be an attractive district, both for student achievement, student success, but also for economic development to our community. All right? So we want to really up the game in that respect, and try to really provide quality education for every one of our students. One of the things that we launched, if you look at the internships and mentoring piece here, we had a breakfast two weeks ago with all of the Marshall County, Chamber of Commerce was invited, Marysville Main Street. We had between 40 and 50 individuals show up at 7:00 in the morning to learn about our District of Innovation application, and what we're trying to do around internships and mentoring. Our goal is to provide all 37 career pathways to our students. We can't do that through traditional methods. We're gonna have to be creative about how we do that. But we want to try to meet every child's interest and help them pursue that. Part of our application was to encourage them to pursue multiple options, because most of them don't know what they want to do when they're in high school. So part of our strategy is to allow them opportunities to investigate multiple careers. I know my son would have benefited from that. But just a kind of an update on where we are, evaluations. One of the things that I talked to you about was the 60-day window at the first of each semester. We've been talking about that as a Coalition. I've sent them a proposal that we're gonna be discussing later this month. Actually, when we sat down to it, the proposal that I've sent to them actually involves more observations than the traditional evaluation system did. It involves more conferences, and it's really focused on growing those teachers. And so I'm looking forward to some conversation around that. The internships and mentoring, again, we've kicked that off, looking county-wide of how we can do that, and we're looking for partners in our community. One of the things that we did, talk about testing, just to kind of give you an update, our state testing is just wrapped up in our schools, and it's really gone very well. I have had no issues from our building coordinators. But we're going right into ACT Aspire, assumptive testing, starting next week. And we're really looking forward to getting those results back, along with the state test results back, and really doing some data analysis to see where that looks. Going backward, we did formative testing through ACT Aspire, was back in January. So just wanted to give you a quick update of where we are at the Marysville School District moving forward. So I think this time we'll stand for any questions that you may have around this annual update.
Just to let you know, my hand-waving device isn't working. And so, questions? Jim Porter?
This is to you, Cindy. What you say is really exciting, and I really, really appreciate that. What can you do as an innovative school that you could not have done without being one of them?
That's a great question, Jim. And I have to tell you, we will be doing this work in the Coalition or not in the Coalition. Two things that the Coalition helps us do. Be surrounded by other people who are working on similar things for their communities and kids.
The other members, you're talking about your colleagues?
The members of the Coalition. Being surrounded by folks who really want to think outside of the box, not just think about state assessment, but think about truly getting our kids prepared for the future. So it's really that energy that we get from being around folks who are excited about education and the possibilities that we can have. But the other thing is also having opportunities to talk about things that get in the way of the work. And it won't be news to all of you when I say that the Kansas assessment has sometimes gotten in the way of our work, because we want to aim for an assessment that opens doors for our kids. Now, I'm hopeful that our current assessment will provide some of that opportunity. But right now, when we're trying to get our kids fully admitted into college, it's the ACT that drives them. So that, and then, you know, thinking about, we are right on the state line, and this is a Kansas Board of Regents issue. But if my students need to go over to Penn Valley Community College, because they have the best program in an area that is on their career pathway, that credit does not always transfer if they come back into Kansas schools. And so wanting to have some support to figure out how we work through those issues. So that's why we're in.
Just to give everybody a heads up, I'm back online with the hand-waving. But Janet?
Thank you. My question is real simple. No, it's simple, but it's my concern that I have. So many of the concerns that I've heard expressed by members of the Coalition and other people have to do with post-secondary, the Board of Regents. And I mean, that we have no control over. We can control K through 12, but we have... And my question is, are you guys meeting with the Board of Regents? Are you bringing them in? Are they... In fact, I think frankly would probably be a good idea to have one of them serve on your board, you know? I mean, because some of these issues, just like Cindy said right there, was a Board of Regents issue, and it's like testing. I mean, why can't the state assessment, if it's that good, why can't it be accepted, used to be accepted instead of the ACT? Or, you know, what's wrong with that? I mean, so anyway, that's my concern.
Very valid concerns, and certainly, as we grow, we may do that. We are just in the process, they're reviewing it actually, sending out a letter asking the Regents' deans to meet with us next time, and Andy Tompkins and I, as you know, he retired yesterday, been having those conversations. It may lead to that, because some things are post-secondary. Some things are federal government, some things are within the purview of the State Board. And our bylaws say that if they're under the purview of the State Board, obviously, you will vote on those. If not, then, you know, we'll work with you with the support of that. So Janet, you are correct. As we start to take a look at a variety of things, we're gonna have to start reaching out and partnering with people, because we can waive the law that, when Cindy's kids could go across the border and take that, but then how do we know when they apply to Emporius State? Emporius State doesn't know who that kid is. So we have to work out a lot of logistics to make that work. And so I put in a call to Debbie Mercer, the Dean of Education at K-State, just to start that same kind of discussion. And Andy and I had those discussions last month about how are we gonna put some of these things together?
Well, and not only that, I mean, not only the things like that, but even the licensure issue.
Correct.
I mean, I've been contacted by, well, we got a letter from all the professors, well, the heads of deans of all the schools of education, concerned about this, and they wanted to be a part.
Correct.
They felt they should have been a part, or shouldn't be a part of this. So anyway, I mean, there's a lot of issues that are Board of Regents issues that I feel should be addressed. Thank you.
Steve Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To any of you, and thank you so much for the work that you're doing. The sense that y'all are outlaws, or that you've been enabled by us to be outlaws, what can we do to help change that from that perception, whether it's in the field or in the public, that this is really sort of a rogue operation, outlaw may be a little harsh, and make it more that think tank and innovation piece? Could you help us with some language, or talking points, or just ideas to help push that?
You're gonna hear me talk a little bit about the licensure piece in a minute, but that's a good segue, Mr. Roberts, into that. And as I've been thinking about it, I think a lot about my Aunt Thelma, who, in your mind, think of Bee on Andy Taylor's show, you remember? My Aunt Thelma was a lot like her in personality and in many other ways. She, her favorite book to read to me was "The Emperor's New Clothes." And how that's relevant to this is, the superintendents and the Coalition and their boards are doers. We want to think of something that's good for kids, and we want to move it forward. The emperor loved clothes. He wanted to figure out how to have the best clothes regardless and move forward, right? Think about that. And one of the things the emperor learned, and I think that we're learning, is that, number one, you've got to be clear in your communication about why you're doing something with all constituents. And that may mean that you have to slow up a little bit in order to do that. So you'll hear me talk more about what we're thinking about in those arenas. And just let me say, we are so grateful for you all, and giving us chances to grow and change, and understand that the experience you had this morning may have been very uncomfortable, but we need to own that, because we weren't as inviting to bring people into the initial conversation as we needed to be. So as we move forward, those are lessons learned. We don't want to be outlaws. We want to be seen as districts who you all can leverage to think through new and creative ideas, to see if they're good for kids, and then share that and let the field decide where to go from there. to see if they're good for kids and then share that and let the field decide where to go from there.
Carolyn Campbell?
Thank you. Well, first of all, I have to say, I was not uncomfortable this morning listening to the concerns of people across the state. It was long. I might have been getting hungry, but, but.
You were a little bit uncomfortable.
But I just don't want you to think that, that I and maybe some others, we were not uncomfortable with what they were sharing with us. And I, you know, I have a lot of respect for, for you, Dr. Lane, and for what, you know, you're trying to do. But everybody knows that the initial, the way the coalition board came about, I'm not happy with. And you made a comment about being able to work with the coalition board members. You're working with people that want it, you know, change or to share thoughts. Well, my thought is, you could have probably talked to a lot of districts, superintendents and people that were not a part of that. I mean, it was almost, I'm sort of half crazy. I was hearing, what you were saying was that there was, if they weren't on the coalition board, there was no one else you knew to go to, to sort of work with. And I know you didn't really mean that, that way, but that's how, how I receive that. Now, what I've, my other concern is, and I've had this voice to me, is the board members, you say you have nine voting members. And so it's members of the coalition and then two members from, from our board. And Brad. Okay. I, it's almost, okay, I hate to say it this way, but that's what I'm going to do. It's almost like it's a self-policing group of people. This is a perception that some people will have because this is what has been said to me. So I'm thinking that maybe what should happen, I would like to see you all at least consider having maybe a business, maybe one or two business people on there to, to help with your board. That's all I got to say.
Thank you very much. Kathy Bush?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a little bit maybe more specific question because I don't know if all of you are using ACT, but you're wanting to. I think, as I remember in your request, a lot of you are using ACT. And when you think about ACT and you think about the growth model, because I know ACT, at least I believe it's now aligned to the new standards. Or if it's not, it's getting ready to be. I'm not exactly sure where that is. You know, ACT in the past really wasn't set up as a growth model or as the potential of being able to be used as a growth model. So is that available now? How are you going to do that? What are you looking at as far as that piece with? And I mean, I think ACT is a great test. I mean, don't get me wrong. But as far as looking at growth, does this new system allow you to do that?
Thanks, Kathy. I think if you, let's look back a little bit with the waivers that KCK and McPherson had. We actually were able to growth model that, starting in middle school. Now, we couldn't go back to elementary. And we used Explore, Plan, ACT and Work Keys as our, as our kind of our final. And so we worked with ACT to use the cut scores to actually growth model that in our, in McPherson, I believe in KCK too. That'll be easier under ACT Aspire because now it actually starts a student in third grade and actually growth models that up. But I want to tag on to something that Cindy mentioned. We're in a transition period, as you know. We had, I think, a great testing experience from a technology perspective this spring into the state assessment. Now, the challenge as we move forward is, is that assessment going to have the same indicators that an ACT would, you know, and quite possibly it will. So it may be that, you know, in the future, we don't use ACT. But in this transition, we think we were able to growth model from, for us from sixth grade on. And Aspire will allow us to do that now from third grade on until we transition to possibly a new assessment.
Our approach was a little bit different. We actually took the NWA MAP test and we aligned at what, what levels do students need to be in in math and reading and science to perform at college readiness? So we have that all the way down to kindergarten and we're still using that. But you're right, growth is essential. We need to know all the way through the child's educational experience. Are they on target? And if not, what do we do to get them there? Thank you.
In just a moment, Cindy, we're going to transition to the assessment piece. But I'd like to take a point of privilege here. And Carolyn? Okay. I would go along with Carolyn this morning and say that actually, listening to the folks, to their passion, their commitment, their concern, you know, that we heard this morning from about 19 representatives, was really good. You know, it's wonderful to see that passion. And if nothing else, if we as an innovative board were able to bring that and make it a headline, we did pretty good. Now, we might not have liked the fact that they didn't like what we were talking about, but I think we did like what they were talking about in the sense that we have a challenge in terms of staffing, in terms of putting the best teachers in front of our students. And I heard across the whole spectrum, what we had to vote on today earlier was probably not the place to go. But from the deans, when we got their letter and from the conversation I heard this morning, it was, we want to work together. You know, and Cindy, thank you for your remarks. We probably should have been more inclusive. Innovation, sometimes when you do that little think tank thing, you know, it kind of isolates you and you think you're the only one. And I, I would plead guilty to that a little myself. So it was really good this morning. It caused us to stop, to pause and to say, you know, we've still got an issue, but you know, there's people out there who are players in this that, that want to be at the table. And we actually want them at the table. And that's really good. So, you know, when we talk about today, you're leading into the, the innovative license, the license from the Coalition of Innovative Districts. It, it is that continued evolution of, of a thought and a concept to meet a need within our districts that we need to keep our eyes focused on and not the issue that we want in any way to demean or to take away from the professionals and the great teachers that we have in our state. You know, and, and I heard a lot of good recommendations and suggestions today that we need to really take seriously in our conversation. You know, so this is really, I don't think it's even a step back for the coalition board. I think it's two steps forward. We know who the partners are, they've got great ideas. And I think we're going to be a better, we'll have a better proposal when it comes back to this board than we would have had today. And that makes me feel good about what, what took place. It was two hours or an hour and a half of, of good stuff. You know, sorry about being late, but it was worth it as far as I can see. Before you begin, Cindy, I've got Sally Cobble has some remarks. Sally?
Thank you very much. I too am a little concerned about some comments that Carolyn made about the innovation coalition. What you're saying, I like. Okay? It doesn't always seem to appear in what is being asked. I guess when it comes to innovation, changing a test, to me is not innovation. Okay? Randy, I'd like you to put up the first slide, I think, that you had on the innovations of, of your attempts. No, no, you, you went past it. There it is, right there. I think we all around this table have the same success indicators that are up there. I would like to add one to that. But I like what you want to do. I like the idea of innovation. It's just that some of the things that you're talking about to me is not innovation. I don't look at it as innovation. Maybe what you end up doing with it, I'll see in the end. Okay, but right now it's not clear. I am one too, that I don't think it's anybody's secret that I did not like how this innovative district thing came about. But I can get over that. You know, if this, if this is going to give us a chance to pilot some things and do some things, I can get over it. Okay, I can get over that part. But this is what then, if you look at those four things, and this has nothing to do with the trust of the innovative district. Okay? I think it comes from a little distrust that I have across the street. Those four success indicators came out, which I was glad to see as what would be successful in somebody's, of what they would like the new school formula to be. I just think they're missing something. I guess, so I've got a two-fold thing. I don't want to fight with across the street, but I want them to let us do our job. Okay? If something goes into this innovative district, I think it should come through us, not them. I think we should all be together in that. Put somebody from there on your board. I don't care. Put something from the House and Ed Education Committee on it. You know, that's just fine with me. But we need to keep the flow right of what the Constitution lays out. And, and that's what I'm really concerned about. So let's go on and move forward because that, that takes us backwards. And I want to keep moving forward because if this works out, we've got a really awesome thing going. Okay, I'm just dragging one foot, waiting for the shoe to drop. Okay? Watching my back, I guess. Randy, I think when we went around and listened, why did you guys not put a fifth draw, fifth? Or did it just not come out until we had those forums?
That's a good question.
Because I think, I'll probably bring that up again, is citizenship. I mean, I, I think we're really missing that piece. And I think there is a lot of innovation that can be done for schools around that. Because, you know, and maybe I'm looking at myself, I would hate to think that I am unsuccessful. But I'm as an, I'm an individual that went through school. But if you want to say, you know, am I in a job that's above poverty level? I, you know, my income tax report showed $4,000.
Yes, this was, this took place before we did the visiting tours. As I said, we have to come back and have this discussion with that. You know, for us, that's our model, as you know, Sally. We have three areas and our board says put citizenship first. Yeah, I was, I was doing a conference this week on rural development. And we were focused on Work Keys and National Career Readiness Certificate. And a gentleman asked me, are we just training people like Allentown, Pennsylvania? And then we won't? I said, well, you've asked me to talk about one of nine areas. You know, and McPherson, we look at each one of these nine as being equal. But this conference asked me to talk about one. I, I think we will, we will talk about that. Certainly, as you know, and Brad, we're doing the analysis of that data. Well over half of the responses were non-cognitive, or they're non-academic. I mean, they were, they were things that weren't. So yes, we will. Much of what we've tried to do in year one is get, get a rethinking of what the coalition board's going to be. And get state board approval and then develop bylaws. And now we're, we're starting to amp up a little bit. And as Cindy said, we've made some mistakes along the way. You know, I mean, we came at it, we're this innovative think tank and hey, we're going. And we have a local school board that oversees us. And as Jim said, the discussion that we're having is really good for movement of education. We're all friends in this. We are. And so I think we've learned some things in, in a short period of time. Thank you. Well, thank you very much, Cindy.
Thank you so much. And as we transition, Carolyn, I always appreciate that you give me feedback as a leader to think about exactly how I phrase things. I appreciate that. So the word uncomfortable was not well selected. But frankly, what I meant was, we should have had the dialogues with those partners before they needed to come to you. And Dr. Watson has sent a letter inviting folks and so we're slowing up to do that. And in terms of how the coalition came to be, I certainly appreciate the feelings about that. We decided to apply and enter because if it'll help us do things for kids, we need to think about it. And so appreciate that feedback. And Sally, you're absolutely right, just changing a test isn't innovative. But as an urban school district, when you surround kids with mentors who are professionals and then they graduate with credentials that allow them to access those professions, I don't know of any other urban school district doing that for every kid across the nation. So you're, you're right. So that also helps me make sure that we emphasize what's important about the work. I know, I know. But we get better as leaders when people are willing to say, emperor, you don't have on any clothes. You know, get, get, get on it. So we get that. And today, I don't want to spend a lot of time going over procedural changes that have come about because of the input of the state board. Many are in the PowerPoint and if you want me to go there, we can go there. But frankly, when we met at the last coalition, we said, what is it that we need to do to help people understand our intention around the licensure law? And we too have seen the media reports and watched the news clippings of folks trying to understand and have heard from some of our KNEA partners and all kinds of folks who do not understand the intention. The intention is not to hire less qualified people for classrooms. I can tell you that I am adamant that every classroom in KCK has to have the highest performing professional. And I know the colleagues here do too. But we haven't communicated that well. It didn't sound like that was our intention. So we put together this position statement, it could be called a grounding statement, it could be a lot of things, to try to describe what the intention is of this licensure. And I'm not going to read it to you, but I would appreciate it if you would share with me, what are you noticing? What jumps out at you when you look at that? Professionals. What else do you see? First line, hope there's a word. Transparent. Pilot. We want to be your pilot, your pilot, not the legislator's pilot, your pilot. What else do you notice? Absolutely prudent, judicious, thoughtful. And we want to be held accountable for that. You know, as we look at staffing all classrooms in our districts, we have to make sure that we're doing that as if our own child, our own grandchild, our nieces and nephews are the ones that are going to be receiving the instruction from that person. So let me move you to the middle of that, that it has to be directly related to advancing the goals in the District of Student Success. It has to be tied to that. And then the last part, bold words. We'll consider all kinds of factors, like teachers who are licensed and endorsed in other fields that we think and have evidence that they could be excellent teaching in, maybe in a non-endorsed area. Or individuals that have a professional degree, not credentialed as a teacher, but have professional experience, background, degree, evidence that they are highly qualified for that. We would welcome you pushing us on this language to help us make sure that we can clearly communicate succinctly what our intention is. So it is a pilot and we want you to think about it that way. And as we have listened to you, I know in the, in the last presentation that we made, we were talking about credentialing people for up to five years. We have heard your feedback on that and, and that's too long. It'll be a one-year credentialing and we'll renew that. And then we will bring data to you and get feedback and move it forward. So we wanted you to know that we made that change. But, but for me, one of the most important things to talk about today is a model. You've done this before in KCK. It was called KCK Public Schools Teaching Fellows. It was a partnership with Pittsburgh State University and it lasted a decade. And it was alternative certification. And so this may not be exact as that program, but I would suggest to you, it's very similar. We had nine groups of teachers. The total was 270 individuals who were in these cohorts placed in our schools. The total was 270 individuals who were in these cohorts placed in our schools. There was a very rigorous recruiting process. And this process, I've heard my colleagues talk about something similar that they want to use. And I have to tell you that out of that 270 teaching fellows, these were individuals who were professionals in other fields, came to our district and 150 of them remain under alternative licensure. Some of them have gotten full licensure. They're some of the best teachers that we have in KCK and many have moved up and have now become credentialed and are leading our buildings and doing great work. So you've done the model before and we want to think about, what can we learn from this model? The only reason that this was eliminated in KCK, we had to cut it in 2009, 10. What was happening then?
Money.
$10 million cut to KCK alone. That's the only reason that this program was sacrificed. So in this model, and this is the model that KCK plans to replicate with some adjustments. These individuals had what we call boot camp. The summer before their first placement in class, they received nine college credit hours of pedagogy with some of our most exceptional educators and Pittsburgh State. They were placed in classrooms and then over the next two-year period, they continued to be coached and mentored and encouraged and, and they obtained their licensure. In KCK, we want to follow the same model with some exceptions. Rather than front-loading the pedagogy, we want to place a limited number of individuals in classrooms and then we are committed to that mentoring and pedagogy development and will be looking for higher ed partners for those individuals who want that degree. Limited amount. An example, just today, my human resources director told me about a college chemistry teacher who wants to come teach in K-12. Chemistry. I can tell you across the entire state, when you say chemistry, we all flock. We'd love to be able to hire that person and encourage that professor, college professor, to move on and get licensure. But if not, then we will continue to support and mentor, but we'll have a, an expert person teaching in the classroom. So every district has a, a different need, a different model, but there is a full commitment to ensure that the district is responsible for ensuring training and pedagogy and support to make this successful. So I want to pause there a minute and, and have you react to that. And much of this came from hearing your feedback of, of being more clear with what we, what we intend.
Janet Wa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question is probably not one you're going to be able to answer, maybe you can. I, I know what you're doing. What about the other districts? I'd like to know what they're doing, how they're going to handle it because I'm assuming each one may be doing it a little bit differently.
A little bit different and the scale is certainly different, Janet.
And I'd just like to know exactly what everyone else has proposed.
I can tell you that, that we have a lot of work to do in that area and I'll admit that to you upfront. We're probably going to lean on the model that, that KCK has used to, to create something that's specific to our teachers. We don't know, I'm probably looking at one teacher that may fall into this category. And, and here's my scenario. I have a Spanish opening in my district right now. I have no applicants. It's been advertised for going on three weeks now. I have nobody applied. I've had three people inquire. One of those is trained in Guatemala. One of them is trained in Spain. I have no idea what their professional training would be. They're obviously native speakers of Spanish. The third person that's inquired is a package deal. He's certified, is a certified teacher in the state of Kansas, but his wife is also a teacher and they need jobs for both people. Well, I don't have an elementary position right now. Okay? So I'm looking at that situation and I may not have an option. Okay? I may be looking at online or distance learning, which I don't think is effective for a, a second language. And so us being small, we're going to have to develop that program. And, and we admit it right up front and that's where we would be working with the other innovative districts and other higher ed to figure out, what do we need to support that person? But each person's probably going to be a little different as to what they need.
Now, I've heard Bev Mortimer in Concordia talk about the fact that she has a need for a part-time industry expert who's in the community and wants to bring that individual in to teach a class or two with support. So that individual will be working for her portion of the day and then go back to his business the rest of the day. But I know there's a commitment, Janet, for everybody to have that pedagogy training. Now, I mentioned a big number when I said 150 in KCK and we hesitate to tell you a percentage, but we're talking about one and a half to 1% of teachers in this category. For, in addition to bringing in folks into classrooms, I want to send kids to Cerner. We have a great partnership with Cerner in our Diploma Plus program. They will do the instruction of our young people in that authentic environment. I would like to be able to hire that person, a Cerner employee, to deliver that instruction and not have a teacher of record that neither needs to go with them because he, my teacher can then stay back and, and teach the prerequisites. So it's really that kind of out-of-the-box thinking. I don't know if you want to talk about McPherson.
We're looking at less than 1% and I could give you some examples, but the two examples right now we have in McPherson are actually licensed teachers that are having to go back to school to get additional endorsements. And I'll just give you one that we will not apply for because of federal funding. It's a special ed teacher, a McPherson Teacher of the Year last year, taught developmentally delayed kids, severely delayed kids for the last over 20 years. Taught in our middle school, but she had ages that would range from about age 10 to about age 16, 17. We, we revamped our 18 to 21-year-old program for severely handicapped kids and to make them more, to make a better transition into the, into life. And we said, hmm, who, who's the best person? Oh, we have that person. Would you do this for us? And she said, yeah, I'll take that on. She has to go back to school to get an additional endorsement because she's not licensed to teach 18 to 21-year-old developmentally delayed people. That's one example. But what we would do, a little bit different than Cindy, we, we put, we have hired, because we're smaller, a former McPherson teacher, former Principal of the Year, who worked for some years in ASDAC in staff development. She mentors every one of our first and second year teachers. That's, that's her job because we have a small enough number to do that. And then she mentors anyone who's on an improvement plan. She then gives us, I mean, she helps them from writing lesson plans to pedagogy to classroom management. And she's also been a professor, still is a professor at one of the small ACCK colleges in our area. So that's how we would handle it. But we know, you, you have to put systems of support with teachers, whether they are fully licensed coming out of school and they've never taught before, or they maybe have had some experiences doing other things, but they've never been in a classroom. So we think that's extremely important.
From feedback before, one of the things the Coalition put in place in terms of the procedures, and you'll see that later in the PowerPoint, is a clear rationale statement. The local board will see it. Why is this person the best for the job? The Coalition Board, and then it comes to you. So you can see, this is why this person is needed in this position. And if it is important for you to see, then I, we will talk about, how do we make sure that you know what that support plan is to ensure that pedagogy is effective?
I'd just simply like to ask, I'd like to see what the other two are going to do. Maybe you could put that for all four so that we can certainly have that, so we can review it. Because I'd like to certainly have that available. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sally Cobble.
I like what you're saying. I didn't like the document that we got because it didn't say that.
It's been changed.
And maybe instead of having a document that just blankets whatever, maybe what we need to do is hear what we're hearing today and maybe it, it needs to be done on an individual instead of a blanket document that we just agree to and then everybody just does what they, because you know, over the years, it could be more than 1% or 2%. What you're talking about now is, is now. And how long are we going to do this? And has not ever been established. So pedagogy is very important to me and I think we set somebody up to fail if we put them in a classroom without that. Because kids can't learn if we have no classroom management.
Pedagogy is key to all of us and even as a licensed person, it doesn't mean that I'm effective with the support.
That's right. But it does help give you the background and make you look at things a little different than you might've as you were going in. So, but I don't mind them getting it as they go along, like you said. It's just like I was for hiring student teachers that are having to student teach and be paid and, and work at the same time. We approved that several years ago and this isn't much different than that, except they've had more pedagogy before they get into, and they've had a lot of experience in the classroom anymore before they get into the student teaching position. But the incidences that are given to me today, I don't know about you yet, I'm not having trouble with. I would like to see what you end up having to do before I say yay on that. But what, what you're willing to do now, I'm, I have no problem with.
Well, keep in mind, we've heard the concern about the length. We want this to be a pilot, one, two-year limit, feedback to you regularly so you can see and we can decide together, what are we learning and how we move forward. I also just want to say, Sally, that not, not everybody will be on the pathway to teacher licensure. In our Teaching Fellows program, most were, all were, but if you take Bev's example of the industry expert in her community, or my example about Cerner, those aren't folks who are interested in licensure and endorsement, but they're experts in that field and we want the students to have access to that.
Yeah, but in Bev's situation, they're not going to be with those students all day either.
That's right.
And that would be like, to me, that situation looks more like when as a teacher, I might have brought in somebody that knew physics to help teach that and I might have brought them in once a week for six weeks to help me with that. But I'm, I was there and I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that. I understand what she's wanting to do and it, it's kind of rare. I think we're going to have to start looking at some things differently. If by 2020, post-secondary is going to need by everybody, but it's going to be needed more in cert, in certification instead of four-year degrees. And we're still working on pathways and we're still sending kids and we want them trained, we're going to have to look at some of these certificates with maybe a bachelor's degree and then with pedagogy. So I think we're going to have to think down the road anyway because we're going to keep having more in those type of people. But that doesn't mean that our kids can't learn from them. We just need to make sure when we're putting somebody in there, we're going to do everything we can for them to be successful and the child to learn.
Absolutely. We agree 100% and would love to be, as you all have dilemmas, how might the Coalition and this process help you solve, explore those dilemmas?
Kathy Bush and then Ken Willard and then I think we're going to move on. Thank you. Kathy?
Well, I'm okay if you want to go ahead and move on and I'll save my question.
No, you're, you're, you've been waiting patiently. Thank you.
You know, this board over the last couple of years has worked really hard on revising licensure because I think there were a lot of barriers and I think it's a heck of a lot better than it was. I think we still have room for improvement. You know, I think we've got some of the secondary issues better than they were, but I think, you know, there's some things that we still can work on. I still look at the out-of-state and wonder if maybe there's some things we can tweak there. So, you know, I, I see some of your requests as really statewide issues. I mean, are there things that we still need to look at as a board for licensure purposes that can help our folks statewide? I do think there's a place for looking at, and I don't really know that you guys, I mean, what you describe as your, your group of teachers that you're going to work with, with another university, I mean, there's some other places in the state that have done some similar things to that. And, you know, I really do see that as some innovation. I see that as looking at some particular ways that you can fill a real need that you may have in an urban school district. But I'm pretty sure that there's some rural school districts that can't get students to come there that maybe, and somebody said, you know, online, you know, there are some good online programs that I think could help some of those. So I think, I think some of these issues can be really cleared up with working with those institutions or higher ed institutions and figuring out how we can be innovative with some of these issues that we're looking at. And so I'm glad that you guys are going to begin to work with and that the deans have indicated an interest to work with you guys to try to decide, how can you set up some of those innovative programs? Because I think there's some real potential there. But again, if there's some licensure impediments that still exist there that are preventing you guys from some things, I have a feeling they're presenting in our other school districts and are there things we still need to look at? I would imagine we all feel that we'd like to know that so we can look at things to continue to, we still want, you know, my kids are certainly out of school, but I want my grandkids to have the best licensed teacher they can. And I always looked at that, that if, you know, would I want my child in that classroom when I was in a, a building principal or an assistant soup? You know, would I want my child in that classroom? And I want, I want somebody who certainly has the content knowledge, but also has the pedagogy. You know, my, I've, I worked mainly secondary, but you know, I think that elementary, you know, I've said before, I think that teaching reading is rocket science.
You're right.
And, you know, those folks really have to know how to teach those children how to read and we all know how important that is. So, you know, I'm, I'm really protective right now as far as the elementary is concerned and what those folks need. I think there's potential for innovation there also though. So I'm hoping that you're looking at some of those things. And, you know, when you talked about your specialized certificate, what I looked at when I looked at the documents in this, I honestly didn't see anything very specialized about it. So I'm kind of hoping maybe you've got something that looks a little more specialized that you're looking at. That certificate that I saw was pretty broad-ranging and I didn't feel like it was very specialized.
That's good feedback. You know, it was modeled after existing processes that are in place. So we can take a look at, how do we strengthen the language so you see exactly what the specialized piece of that is? That's good feedback.
Ken Willard.
I'll withdraw my name so we can move on.
Jim Porter.
I apologize for adding my name after you said no, but.
Well, thank you.
I meet with the Professional Standards Board and we met, and this is sort of Kathy kind of, kind of caused me to think about that. We met this week and one of the things that we talked about was how we can, how we can break down barriers so we can have the best person in the classroom. And so I just wanted to add to that, we need to, if there are barriers, we need to, we need to work on those universally. So it's not just for innovative schools, but for all of us. I've got the same problem that Bill has right now with Spanish teacher, you know, and I'd like to have that solution. But one of the things that really concerned me last month whenever Tom was here and I asked him, does this apply to elementary teachers? And he said, yes. That, that really scared me. And let me, I'm just going to give you an example, then I'll shut up. I went to, last week, I sat down in the floor, you can imagine the person in my age being able to do that, with a whole bunch of, with a whole bunch of kindergarteners and they were, and every one of them read to me.
Good. Excellent.
And I consider every kindergarten teacher a, a direct candidate for sainthood because they do miracles every year. And I want to make sure that that person that's dealing with that kindergartner and that, that, so, so just the question of, does this apply to elementary teachers or, or primary teachers? The examples you've given make sense to me. That, that, that's a real concern of mine.
I, I appreciate that and I know the Coalition does as well. And, and we talked about that last time we met. There's some concern about narrowing it because there may be an example when it's appropriate. And so I thought a lot about, for me, what might that be? I have to tell you that in KCK, we're, we're very fortunate, I'm going to use the word blessed, that we have high-quality elementary folks. So for us, this, we aren't looking at, in that arena. However, there's an individual who's been coming in and consulting in our district who is credentialed in another state that this state does not have reciprocity with. He is an extraordinary teacher. If he wanted to come teach in KCK or if I could get him here, I would want to hire him in a minute. So there may be times when that is appropriate, but perhaps in those instances, we need to have even a, a more rigorous vetting process that we share with you and think about with.
That might be one of those barrier issues that we, that we need to own.
Yeah, yeah. So let me just, let me just close this with, you have in the PowerPoint, some of the adjustments we've made in procedures, but we really want to be seen as, as. But we really want to be seen as, as your pilot to think about how do we resolve some of the issues, because you're absolutely right. These are not just the issues of six school districts. These are issues faced by colleagues across, and school boards across the entire state. So we want to do this right. We want to be thoughtful. And we do appreciate the feedback that we need to be open and transparent and not just running down the rails without stopping to get critical feedback. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation. And the one caveat that I'm going to give to the coalition board is, we're not in a hurry. I, I, I don't want to look at this and say, well, we got to get this done by Thursday. We need to be thoughtful and if, when we're ready, we bring it back when we're ready. Not until. And, and not try to meet an artificial deadline that really is just going to put pressure on. Include the folks that need to be there, you know, and, and Cindy, I liked your term, you know, for the board to think of the coalition as our think tank, you know, and think tanks challenge us. And this has challenged us and you've done an excellent job today. Thank you both you and Bill, you know, in presenting. So let's take a break until five after. We're going to take a break until...
I'm not on it. This is, the things in here are the same.
Well, that's because it was put in a packet earlier. Yes?
Yeah, we'll get to the updated PowerPoint.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll email you that.
That went out in the packet before the changes were made for, for this.
I think this is the 11:30 a.m. version.
Yes, Deanna.
And there was the, the sheet that you followed, the steps that are being followed is in the application form.
We'll get all those sheets and pieces of paper out. Thank you very much. We'll be back at five after. Steve, would you act as Sergeant-at-Arms and go see who's in the lobby there? Or did we lose them to the second floor women's restroom? Okay, John, you need, we're going to have a quorum here. One, two, three, four, five, six. We're ready to go. Okay, we're back.
Okay, John, you need, um, need to help me with this a little bit? We have Matt's going to be long distance. That's a little Matt up there, if that's the way we're going to do this. Okay, we're back.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Uh, yes, we can. Thank you, Matt. Where are you, by the way?
I am in Chicago.
Very good.
Getting ready to present at American Educational Researcher Association Conference later, well, tomorrow.
We can, thank you, Matt. Where are you, by the way?
Are you getting the fun loop that I'm getting in, in audio?
That's on your end.
Okay. Well, I'll just try to pretend like it's not weird to hear something that I said two minutes ago. So just, again, giving the sort of the update on where we are with implementation. Of course, this is an ongoing process.
Are you watching the stream, Matt?
I might be. Let me, let me double check. Yes, I am. Technology is wonderful, right? Okay. There we go. And, did I just put up a meeting? Did I lose you guys?
No, we're here.
Okay, I, I lost the, the video on my end, but that's okay, because you not seeing me, I'm okay with.
No, we see you. You don't see us.
Oh, well, that's, that's okay. But that's okay. We'll, we'll just keep rolling forward and we'll make, we'll make this, we'll make this happen. So I'm glad, again, to have an opportunity to talk to you guys. I know, I know you guys know who I am, but there's my info in case anybody doesn't have it. My email and my Twitter handle and the hashtag I use a lot when making posts, and of course, the KSTE Science website. I'm going to talk to you today a little bit about one piece of implementation and, and then also a great sort of cross-state conversation that we've had. Been working recently with districts around course mapping. What you see in front of you now is a recently released publication by the National Research Council, the same folks that put together the K-12 Framework for Science Education have recently released this guide to implementing the next generation science standards. And a lot of what we have been doing to this point lines up very well. They're talking about some key components that they say are important parts of a program is building leadership within your teachers, increasing communication around all stakeholders that are part of this conversation, building partnerships between parents and communities and, and teachers and post-secondary and business and industry and all these pieces are, are really important parts. Equity, having an eye on equity in this, this conversation benefits all students. And then building K-12 coherence in this system and also that links to early childhood and, and links to post-secondary is essential for us to be able to reach our vision for science education. There are a lot of things in here that are, are pieces of our implementation plan that we've been doing all along. So it's great to have sort of the reinforcement from the research base that says we're heading in the right direction. One of the quick pieces that we've been doing recently is trying to use data that exists and to gather more data to bring districts together around decision-making. So one of these decisions that has to be made is what happens with course sequences at the middle school and high school level? So I'm going to throw you a little bit of data that we've been analyzing. I was at the curriculum leaders meeting last Friday, sharing this data with them and having some great conversations. So what you see now is just some categories that we used our data to look at. And what you see right here is course sequence, or courses at the high school level. And the percentages are actually the number of, the percent of school districts that offer these courses. So I'd like you, these are four high school level courses. Just take 15 seconds. Of course, one of these is not like the others. And tell the person that you're sitting beside, what course you think is the one that's not like the others? So I'm going to give you a grand total of 15 seconds to get that figured out. Now let somebody report it out to me in 15 seconds.
I just don't... Frontier rule, densely settled rule, semi-urban, urban state that isn't like the others?
I'll help you out a little bit here. I'll let you keep thinking. That one over there is biology.
Oh.
Which most of our school districts are offering. That one's chemistry. Again, most of our school districts are offering.
I didn't get what we...
And then here's physics. So now that I gave you a little bit of help, somebody has just shout out what you think that fourth, fourth course is. You might have to use your mic, though, for me to hear it.
Is it geol... Geology?
Okay, I heard, I heard geology.
Engineering.
Is engineering a science of math?
It is earth and space science indeed. So this is one of our challenges, and we talked a lot about, with the district curriculum leaders about, you know, the, the expectation of these standards is that it's all standards for all students. But we have across the state, less than 60% of our districts that are even offering an earth and space science course. So we had some really good conversations about that. Another piece that we talked about quite a bit was where we see some of the advanced science courses. This is just using AP as an example, but we had some discussions about the patterns that we see here and whether or not it's an equity issue. The group decided that it was an equity issue that there is a much higher frequency depending on sort of census data population categories for student access to advanced science courses. And although all that's up here are the AP courses, you see similar patterns with other sort of advanced science courses. The data that we don't have, that's sort of missing here, is it sort of, we generated lots of questions from this conversation, and the questions we generate is like, just because it's offered, it doesn't necessarily mean that students are taking it. And we don't have the data, at least at KSTE right now, about which students are taking which course to help answer that question. So one of the things that came out of this conversation was, we need to, there's sort of a renewed desire to get better information through the STUCO system entered, so we can answer some of those questions. So one of the pieces that we, we did out of that is, is we're surveying districts around this course sequence question. At the point of that meeting, we had about 40 districts that are reporting. We now have nearly 80, because I gave them opportunities within that meeting to submit that information. And, and the goal here is, is sort of, we have at least three goals within this. One is to support districts in making good decisions about course sequences at the middle school and the high school level. Another one is to sort of establish a mechanism for collaboration. So we're probably not going to get to the point that all districts are going to use the same sequence, at least not with this set of standards, just in a timeframe, a seven-year timeframe cycle. But we want to make sure that they can connect with each other around this and that if they're using similar sequences in different places, that they know that. So what we've done is, this data is available to all the curriculum leaders, and they can go in and find a district that has the similar sequence or is thinking of changing to a similar sequence and partner in that way. This is from, we asked them within that survey, both what they were doing, and again, this is based just on the 40 schools that we had, not the, the bigger group yet. I haven't had a chance to dig through all that data. And we're hoping to add to that. But just some, some patterns that we start seeing about where schools were. A lot of them had a domain-specific sequence, so that means like an earth and life and a physical science mainly. The next biggest chunk is integrated, and then another chunk is something entirely different. In that category, there are things like, the sixth grade is very different than seventh and eighth, because sixth grade is at the elementary and, and a variety of other things. But within the survey itself, the district leaders have access to that information and they can see if there's somebody else that has a sequence like them. If we dig into that biggest category, we actually find some more interesting questions and patterns that show up, even if they're domain-specific and so that seems like a big category. There's people that are doing those domains in lots of different orders. But again, this, this data set gives them the, the opportunity to have that conversation. So that's what people were doing with their old standards, with the 2007 standards. And ask them where they were and then ask them if they're thinking of changing and what they're thinking of changing to. And, and they have access to all those pieces. One other piece that I think I just want to touch on, Chairman McNeese was able to join me for the NGSS Network Meeting, as we're working together across states for answering these questions. At that meeting, we had Kelly Slaton and Jeanette Novo and myself and, and Jim McNeese were a part of that conversation. And kind of out of that came our three big priorities that we're going to keep renewing our efforts around for, for the, for supporting implementation. One of those is communication, continuing to get out information to teachers and to parents and to business and industry and all sorts of folks, and sort of build a, a coalition of people who understand what we're trying to do and what this vision is and how they can be a part of it. A second thing is to continue to offer professional learning opportunities. I'm going to hit an example of that in just a second. And then the third thing is to look at instructional materials and resources. One of the examples of that is that, sort of out of that conversation, also at the same meeting were Danny Bergman, who's Wichita State University Professor in Science Education, and also the president, current president, oh, he just rotated off a couple of weeks ago, current, the most recent past president of CATS. And, and Kimberly Staples from Kansas State University, also a science education professor. And one of the great things that came out of that is, there's sort of a need to have, to actually see video of what this looks like in the classroom. So one of the things that they're both going to start doing is collecting videos of pre-service teachers, but also their cooperating teachers, and then finding a way to make those available to folks to really see what did this look like, what does this look like in the classroom? Back to the professional learning thing. One of the opportunities that KSTE is providing this summer is the 2015 Kansas Excellence in Math and Science Conference. This is an outgrowth from the Keene Network and the Presidential Awards for Math and Science Teaching. It's at the Cosmosphere in Hutch Community College this summer. Would certainly love any of the board members to be able to swing by and join in the conversation. But we're going to have a really fantastic opportunity for teachers to come and dig, continue to dig deep in our standards. And we'll have some panels with business and industry. Westar has been a, a big sponsor of this conference historically, and there's, there's some other folks as well. The Kansas Association of Teachers in Mathematics and the Kansas Association of Teachers of Science are both sponsoring and, and being a part of it. Teachers will have an opportunity to, during the morning, to get some feedback of some really great opportunity, or different things that are happening around the state. And then in the afternoons, we're really going to dig in for some high-quality professional learning. And those afternoons will be linked all across the three days of the conference. So we'll have a real opportunity to build learning and understanding of what it means to do this in the classroom. So if anybody is watching and wants the link, they can certainly grab it off the KSTE website. But there's a quick little bit.ly link as well to go and register for that conference. Registration fee is $100 for non-Kean members. Keen is the Kansas Educator Network. And those folks are people that have won awards for teaching in Kansas in the past. That $100 actually also, for the first 200 applicants, includes lodging at the dorms at the community college, so it can take a big chunk out of the expensive professional learning opportunity. So those are the biggest pieces that I want to sort of run by folks, and I would certainly be open for questions. I'm going to try to find if I can get the video back so I can see people's faces while we're talking.
Ken Willard?
That's from the last round.
Okay. Good deal. Even better. Matt, from our time that we were in San Francisco, and I apologize, we haven't really done anything with this since I, I, we met, and we need to follow up on that. But to share with the board that we learned from Kentucky and from Washington, the, the benefit for science education across their state to engage in, with coalition building at, at various levels. It's not just that Westar will support us with a conference underwriting, but that we will bring stakeholders in the business industry as well as across the communities together to support, you know, increased standards, high-stairs standards in science education. So one of those things that we'll be looking at is going to be, how do we do that? We know the value of communication. We learned that just a little while ago with innovative districts, that we need to communicate and engage with our stakeholders. So that will become a priority for us as we move forward. It's, I think it's really essential for success in the classroom, that we have this effort, you know, to keep us focused on the implementation of next-generation science and increasing the science aptitude of our, our students. So when you get back, I think we'll be having more meetings on that. You need more meetings, Matt. And we'll, we'll, we'll make it a priority.
Sounds fantastic.
Okay. Any other questions for Matt? Matt, you said you were going to be presenting here in a few minutes?
It's not until tomorrow morning, so I'm good.
Okay, so that's a lot of minutes. Okay. All righty. Well, if we have nothing else for Matt, I think we can move along. Anything else, Matt, for you?
I'm good. Thank you all so much again for the opportunity to share an update on how things are going.
Sounds great. Thank you very much.
All right.
Dr. Smith? Wow, assessment update. We've been looking forward to this one. Assessments have been going on and, since what, February something? 15 and... March 15th? March 9th. Let's get that specific. May 15th is the conclusion of the window. We're anxious to find out how things are going. So thank you for being here.
The good news is, I think, we have tried to, in putting this together, I apologize in advance for not making this available to you in your packets, but what we try to do is always get the, the most recent news as we can, so we rely on updates from CET. So I'm here with Beth today. She's going to have a sort of cover at the end, a handout and a couple of things. So again, this is, this is as, as recent as we can, the most recent information we can provide to you, really nine-tenths of it is directly from CET. So to begin, operational testing progress. As of Friday, April 10, we have about 73% of the sections were complete. So there are, there are different ways that we can think about test status and I tried to, to provide you with the most digestible. If you have more questions about how tests are being taken, if students are simply taking math and then moving on to language arts, we have a little more information on that, but sort of kept that out of this presentation because it's, it's a little clumsy. But this year, over 5,000 test question, test questions were written, approximately 4,300 were field-tested. We know of at least five questions that had problems. And that is, in this case, they couldn't, students couldn't drag and drop the object. One instance that they were asked to select two options, but computer only lets this, allow the students to select one. But these were, were fixed and when they were identified. We know that some calculator issues have surfaced and, but they've been addressed. Again, the calculator is something that we're leasing, it's not a calculator that CET developed, it's a Texas Instruments calculator. No issues, I think Sally will be pleased, with bandwidth or connectivity or cyber Too many coordinators, and again, we know that test coordinators were running extracts and an extract is sort of a status report, included in which is a roster. At the end of the day, starting at 2:30, that would cause, these caused difficulty for students who may have been still testing. So we asked, or CET asked all extracts to be done before 8:00 AM or after 4:00 PM. Updates have been added to the Kite page and if you were to go to kansasassessments.org and you go under Kite, you'll see problems that have been resolved and those that are still pending. And that's, I think, just a few days old, that, that link. But if you just go to their page and go to Kite, you can, you can see that. And it's also non-technical, it's tried to put it in user-friendly language. So moving on then to scoring, what do we know about scoring thus far this year? Well, teachers from 203 districts signed up to score. As of Tuesday, for 14, 627 scorers have completed scoring, 16,000, this is give or take, five or 10 performance tasks. For math, and this is the number that I think is pretty shocking to us. For math, the average amount of time spent scoring a task is 30 seconds. It's good news. For the multidisciplinary performance tasks, the average amount of time spent scoring a task is 95 seconds. So, talked to Dr. Perry on the phone last night during soccer practice, and I said, hey, you know, one way to look at this is, you know, is this to suggest that, that the text that the students are producing is, is just scant? It's not what we wanted to see. She said, no, it's not the case at all. It's just you have experienced raters, the rubric is working, so it is not a reflection on the amount of text that's being produced. I wanted to, obviously, they haven't scored everything yet, this is just a small number. CET has approximately 230,000 math performance tasks to score, and again, this is just in keeping with the, the number of students who are enrolled, and 257,000 multidisciplinary performance tasks to score, although CET only needs to score 43,000 math tasks and 91,000 performance tasks to get, and this is why this is in italics, because the goal is to get enough data to determine whether all of the field test items can be moved to the operational item bank. In other words, what they're looking at is, yes, they're validating the rubric, but they want to make certain that the prompts work. That's their goal. So that's what streamlines this process. Sorry, I'm moving quickly here, I mean, time for questions, I guess, whenever. Some more about scoring. CET is working with a new vendor on the scoring system. This year CET had to set up training outside of the system. In other words, they had to defer to this third-party vendor, which required a password. CET and KSD have had some negative feedback, I think that's, we've had a lot of feedback, a lot of negative feedback, about teachers needing one password for Kite, one for training, and another for the scoring engine itself. That's bad. I'm just quite certain that if Mary Ann were here, she would say the same. CET will integrate those for next year. We're going to fix that problem. It's, it's not something that we anticipated, it's clunky and we have heard about it. So as you're out in the field, you may also hear about, you know, you know, I'm sitting at home trying to do this, I signed up, tried to be a good soldier and I'm looking at three passwords. It's not ideal. This is just a, a comment that was, Blue Valley had all of their teachers score on Monday and said, despite the frustrations with getting into the training system, they thought the training was well-done and the scoring was a good experience. So, and this is all brand-new. There's zero history in Kansas doing this kind of thing with scoring. Moving on, and what we tried to do was hit some of those things that we have discussed with this board in the past. There was some concern about third graders and typing. So CET staff members and graduate research assistants have visited 23 schools in 11 districts. As far away as Liberal, as far away, given their perspective, I guess, as far away as Liberal, Mays and Paola. Just as a side note, they did not have permission from an institutional review board to have any encounter with students. Anytime you're a researcher, you have to have that permission, you can't give away free sandwiches without having gone before a review board. So as they went in to the schools, they were very, very clear that they were not just really interact, they were just to observe, which is difficult, beginning, anytime you're trying just to observe, it's, it's, it's hard not to, kids look at a new face in the classroom and, you know, who's, who's this person? But that, that was their goal. So far, CET has not observed directly any issues with typing. Now that's in italics, because we're talking about just typing. With typing interfering with a student's ability to respond to the writing prompt. There were, there's definitely a learning curve, especially for these little folks. But the typing itself, and this is again, what their folks reported. That's not to say necessarily that there weren't incidents with typing in other schools that weren't observed, observed by CET. So, some students are writing their response out first on paper, while others type directly on the computer. Some teachers required the students to write the response by hand first, which was not intended. I didn't filter any of these, so these are written just as they appeared to, to Mary Ann from the observers. Some students took notes on paper during the reading time, very few used the notes tool or any other tools provided to them. And that really is, I think, is a, a matter of just familiarity, A, youth, and B, familiarity with, with the testing tool. Most students seem to be using two fingers to type, but many are pretty quick, all watch their hands as they go. I know I do. More on third-grade typing. Students seem to have no issues making edits on the screen. Some teachers, however, were disappointed that the students had to request the spell checker rather than having it set automatically. I had to visit with Beth to really know what this, what this was getting at. But the spell checker, and this is something that can be fixed, I think, the spell checker has to be requested. You know, as we all sit down with Word, it's, it's fairly automatic. And so, you know, it's a question when you're, when you're dealing with some students, do, do we install this in such a way that it automatically flags misspelled words that may be new for them? You know, what does this squiggly green line mean? What does this red line mean? This is something that we're going to have to think about and, and, and deal with next year. It might be the case that, I think this is one of those issues that could divide a crowd of teachers. You know, some say, no, 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 I really want my kids to, to work on their spelling, go it alone, versus I want my kids to know immediately how to work spell checker and I want it set automatically. But that, that's an issue. Some difficulty understanding the format and knowing how to switch views, so as you sit down and, and look at these writing prompts, there's a passage-only option, there's a question-only option, and then there's a passage-question split screen. Again, this is just a, an artifact of familiarity with the system. Many teachers commented the directions were too long and written at too high a level for, for these kids. Others said more directions on how to use the tools were needed. Teachers appreciated the, the chance to give feedback. So again, this is confined to what CET observed. Initial lessons, just a, kind of a summary from CET's vantage point. The typing part seems to be working. CET needs to provide better instructions to both test proctors and students. Again, it's all-new. CET needs to provide practice items to use throughout the year. We knew this in advance, but it was just something that we, you know, they couldn't get developed in time. Students need to practice changing views and using the tools. It's all fairly intuitive stuff. So I'm going to switch to Beth now, who's going to, I can pass those out if you want to go through this. I will say also that CET has managed, people forget sometimes that when Dr. Perry is standing up here talking about test development, she represents the Test Development Center at the Achievement, Assessment and Achievement Institute. There's another IT portion of that institute that has its own director. So she has to sort of work with Karthik Parna-Swamy, who's the director there. But that department, if it, if the, if the, if it was in within, if it was within driving distance, they made their own trips out to schools who reported issues with, with laptops and what have you, to help resolve problems if they thought that it was something that they really needed to sort of see that affected not just the school, but also something, some, some of their code. So again, you may encounter a school who says, well, gosh, I had someone from CET who was out here and they weren't observing third-grade writing, they were actually here visiting with my IT person and they wanted to go directly to the Chromebook having these problems or directing, directly to the laptop. So, just the kind of help that they were providing. So I'm going to turn this over to Beth and pass this out, I think.
So you can have multiple copies of this handout and I encourage you to share it. The handout is related to the standard setting panels that we need and so we're looking for nominations. We have a link to the website, so teachers can nominate themselves, administrators can nominate. I'm asking you to find teachers in your board districts to nominate. Each panel that meets this summer to look at the data from the tests needs to have eight to 10 teachers on it. The teachers need to be familiar with the content standards. They need to have taught the content standards and we're asking that they've taught to a diverse group of, of students. We need teachers who've taught to special education students, to English language learners, gifted students, we need to cover the whole range in that small number of teachers on the panel. So, a panel for English Language Arts, a panel for math, eight to 10 teachers per grade per panel. That's a lot of teachers we need to recruit and we want to make sure that all of your board districts are represented on these panels. And so I want to give you the opportunity to take as many of these forms as you need, encourage people to go online, but please nominate people to, to come. The other requirement with this standard setting, it's July 21st to the 24th, that's four days here in Topeka. We don't have any money to pay stipends, but we do have, there's money in the contract to pay mileage, lodging and provide meals. So that, that will help. But the thing is, is they have to commit to all four days. You can't come late and leave early. You have to be here through the whole thing. Once this group of teachers meets and they work with Mary Ann to go through the whole process of looking at the performance level descriptors, looking at the data from the assessment and making a recommendation on what range of scores should go with each performance level descriptor, then the following week, we'll be bringing a smaller group of policymakers here to the boardroom to look at the data and look at some impact from the data, once that's set, so that then at your August meeting, we'll be able to share the recommendation with you, all the information that we've shared with standard, not all of the information, but the conclusion that the standard-setting panels make. You'll have the month then to think about it, take it out, get your comments. And then in September, hopefully, we're asking that you'll be ready to make a decision to set the scores. Once the scores are set, if that happens in September, then CET would be prepared to release shortly after your meeting, the student-level reports and the building-level reports would be available also. So that would be the first look that the teachers, the students, the parents, everyone would have of, of just how individual students performed. The building report card, where we would release the aggregate information and we would be setting the baseline for future federal accountability, that wouldn't come until November or December, because once the, once the data's released back to the schools and it's become public, although it's private for each individual student, the, the district or the building people still need to go through and make sure that the kids are all in the right place and counted in the right buckets and everything, because it's a real big deal this year that we get everyone counted correctly, so that we can set our baseline for future growth. So that's why there would be a delay this year. So that's where we are with moving forward, once the testing window closes in May. This is, this is electronic, we have it electronic, we have it, the, the link, right, works, it's on the website, yeah.
So the bottom line is, everything is going well. The third graders are doing pretty good, a lot better than the adults think. And you need people to score this summer, or standard settings is, is my, okay? And scoring as a group like Blue Valley did, is a really great professional development activity. Goes well beyond the assessment itself, when people think it's just a drudgery of scoring a test, the, utilizing the rubrics, you know, the inter-rater reliability, the conversations, well, I didn't know we had to do that, you know, that, that, those are great opportunities for teachers, you know?
One other thing I just want to share that we're, we're excited about is that, within the, the testing situation that each student takes, there will be a block of items that will be field-tested each year. And the idea is that as we grow our item bank, then we plan to release items along with the score reports. So parents and the public, you, all people will have a chance to actually see what the items look like that the, the students were tested on. So we'll be releasing with the writing prompts. The reason we're doing so many writing prompts this year is so that we'll have enough, so that once you use a writing prompt across fourth grade and the whole state, you have, we need to release it. We can't use that again, that wouldn't really serve our purpose. So we'll be releasing a lot of items that we weren't able to do with the last test.
Oh, good. Carolyn Campbell has a question.
Thank you. My question is, you said that there, you'll pay for room and board, but there are no stipends. Have you ever, I don't know where the money's coming from, but, oh, okay, so I have someone that lives here, you know, close. Why wouldn't we try to provide an either-or, like a stipend of so much per day? Because they'll be going home for that commitment of, you said you want them here for all four days.
We can absolutely investigate that possibility. I think it makes perfect sense. So just to reiterate what, what Beth said, assembling these committees, it's not something that CET really can do, certainly don't want to do it. It's not something KSTE really should try to do either. It's one of those instances where we are totally and should be beholden to the districts in terms of finding the right people to sit on those committees in, in order that we can consider all students in Kansas. So, so this is, this is something that we, we take very seriously, it's not just about finding a person. So any help that you can provide, greatly appreciated.
Sally Cobble?
Okay. Thank you.
When you said the building report cards will not till November, December, I understand, but on a normal year?
We'll be back the old schedule in the fall.
Okay, they'll get it in the fall. When will the teachers, though, get individual students?
Part of that depends on how successful we are with our scoring. Because before we can release the score back to the students, the performance tasks have to be scored. We're optimistic with the success we're having this year that our goal is to have the information released at the end of the school year or as close to it as we can, depending on how we set the window.
There's, it's, I think we wouldn't be being truthful if we said that we had this hammered out. Initially, we thought that there might be a way to provide a partial score, not a performance category, but a partial score and the machine-scored portion of it. The delay then would be the writing portion that requires a human being. We also haven't hammered out exactly, and this is for CET, you know, how that, to what extent does that writing score affect the final performance cat? That's easy stuff we can work out later on. But what we don't want to do is create a dependency whereby, you know, those persons who are scoring are, you know, sort of have a bad conscience about, you know, they've got a short window. As long as you get your scoring done, we'll have our scores ready in May. But if you don't get your scoring done, then they're delayed. But that's exactly, as Beth said, we need to come up with a window because that's what's new and that's what will delay, given what we were used to, is that human scoring component.
And so it's totally different from the old test. It's not percent correct. It's an adaptive test and it will be a scale score. And I believe Mary Ann is scheduled to explain all of that to you in July before the August sharing of the standard setting and your vote in September. So we'll be providing you a lot of information. But on the machine-scored side, really isn't a reason, you know, that's easy, but we have to look at it as the total test. So we'll be looking at the window very closely next year.
Dina Horst?
Thank you. It says, "If you're interested in nominating a teacher," who all is getting this? Plus us, our administrators receiving this as well? And also, could a teacher?
Self-nominate.
Self-nominate?
So the plan is, I shared it at Curriculum Leaders. I shared it at Council of Supes. I'm sharing it with you. It's going out in the Division Newsletter. And then once the Division Newsletter is out with the links, then it will be out on all of our other listservs, the test coordinators, the content consultants will be putting it out on theirs. We'll be recruiting from a large, as much as we can. The difference is, and with a lot of our committees, is that CETE has asked us to recruit teachers. So that takes all of our administrators out of the picture. It takes the curriculum directors and leaders out of the picture. We need the teachers that have been in the classroom, that have been teaching the standards because they're the ones that are going to have the best, that can give us the best information on those performance level descriptors.
Thank you.
Janet Waugh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Did I hear you say you would like one from every board district, if at all possible?
For every grade, for both subjects.
For both subjects. Okay, then I guess my question is this. I mean, I could go ahead and kind of work on this, but it would appear to me it might be wiser if we waited until you had them in and we found out where your holes are. Then we could definitely fill your holes. I mean, so if you could, what do you think about that? I mean, I hate to go out and do a blast and then get 50 volunteering for third grade.
High on our list typically when we do things like this is make certain that the board districts.
No, I appreciate that, but I mean, if it's going to all these other groups, then...
And so we will, we are hoping that we can pick the best. I mean, you know, look at all the information to meet. We have to, this, you know, our assessment, we have to meet standards with our assessment and one of the standards is that we have, we represent the population in the state for people that are making decisions. And so we need a nice group of people to select from. The other thing is, is that the teachers that aren't selected for this, we have another job for them. And we'll be asking them to participate in the item reviews. So we'll have some information on them and we can start soliciting new people to look at the items that are being developed every year for the review of that and the bias and sensitivity and everything. So we will, you know, even if we can't use them, I'm sure Denise will help us write a very nice letter saying, "Thank you, but we have another opportunity."
We have that problem. But if not, would you send us where you have your holes and then we can try to fill them?
Thank you very much. We'll move on. Thank you. To the Kansas Curriculum Standards for School Counseling. We have Kent Reed and the Review Committee Representatives here to present to us. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Board, for providing us the opportunity to introduce to you the revised School Counseling Standards. Before I introduce our co-chairs, I did bring copies of PowerPoint. Would you like that? I can start over here.
Do we have it?
And I believe Peggy included a copy of the standards that are draft, very much draft, but I'll leave some extra copies here. They're in their pack. Very good. It's an honor for me to introduce our co-chairs for the Writing Committee. First, Dr. Ken Huey, who is professor and chair for Special Education Counseling and Student Affairs for the College of Education at Kansas State University. And Roseanne Haberman, who has 23 years as a school counselor, a longtime coordinator for USD 501, former past president of KCA. And last month, she was inducted into the KCA Hall of Fame. So we're very proud of her. I might have to have Nick help me pull up the PowerPoint. When we began our work, we took a look at what ASCA, the American School Counselors' Association, said in 2012. And that is, "School counseling programs are comprehensive in scope, preventative in design, developmental in nature, and integral to the total educational program." The purpose of this revision, first of all, is to assist all Kansas counselors in planning local curriculum, in assessment for school counseling programs, and integration of academic subject areas into their counseling model. We wanted to align our existing school counseling standards with the ASCA student standards, the social-emotional character development standards that you approved in 2012, and of course, the college and career readiness standards. We took a look at what other states are doing, particularly on a regional basis such as Missouri, Iowa, and Tennessee. We adapted existing competencies. Much has been talked about in this forum relative to the individual plan of study and social-emotional character development, and we tried to integrate those into the counseling standards. We connected the standards and indicators to academic achievement and learning, and we aligned the counseling standards with other existing assessed and modeled standards. For example, there was a lot of discussion about history government when we reviewed a variety of the standards, facts, 21st century learning skills, et cetera. All right, the revision process, originally, the standards were approved in 2006. The current Writing Committee is comprised of Kansas K-12 and higher education representatives, and we tried to get somebody from each of the board regions to be on the committee. We met night times over a year and a half. Again, we reviewed what other state standards were and what other states are doing. We reviewed the ASCA student standards and mindsets and behaviors, which is their newest set, and Dr. Huey might want to mention that a little bit. And then we embedded the Kansas Social-Emotional Character Development standards and college and career readiness standards into the revised School Counseling Standards. Okay? Roseanne?
All school counselors from across the state of Kansas work in three domains. And we work in what we refer to as the academic domain, career development, and social-emotional. Again, that was one of the changes that we made. It used to be referred to as personal-social, but in reference to the SECD standards, we made that change. Across the board, K-12, we work in the age groups. K-12, 3, 5, 6, 8 in high school is 9, 12. Let's see if I, okay, all right. One of the things, now, we just have listed the standards for you here today. One of the things we added to this as we went through the work with the committee is to provide an overview so that counselors and folks in the schools and parents would know, sort of a summary of what we do in the academic domain. So this is a new addition to the standards that you're seeing in academic. In academic, obviously, we're working to help the students become a successful student and as they move through the grades, come out on the other end and graduate with a plan of where they're going to go after high school. In the career domain, I want to mention that in the individual standards that you're looking at, there was no major changes in terms of wording. Most of the changes are in the benchmarks and the performance indicators. And we don't have those listed here, but you would have those in the handouts that are provided. Probably one of the biggest changes that we made in the career domain was bringing in the language of individual plans of study and also moving students into the world of work and getting that language embedded into their planning as they work and mature in terms of their future plans. Probably the area that received the most overhaul was the social-emotional domain. Number one, the change in the name. But one of the first things that we did as a committee was to look at what are the current issues in school counseling today? And since 2006, there have been a lot of changes. One notably was the law that was put in place in 2006 with bullying and cyberbullying. And at the point in 2006, when those standards were reviewed and accepted, we had that as a part of our, the issues that we dealt with students, but certainly it is a much bigger issue today. Obviously, the issue with cyberbullying, suicide ideation, cutting, we had, that's a huge issue for us within the middle school area. We're looking also at integrating technology issues and teaching students how to be safe on the internet as well as cell phone. And then this has become a lot of, kind of a prevention standard because we're teaching those skills as we come up, even from K-2 on up to the high school.
And one of those other issues relative to that prevention standard is the issue of human trafficking. And we're taking a look at trying to address that with more schools. Okay, the alignment with the revised School Counseling Standards. We took the existing content standards, not only assessed, but the model standards and did a crosswalk. We also wanted to align what we're doing in school counseling with CET. And obviously, the individual plans of study would be the hallmark of that piece. We've already visited about social-emotional character development standards and you can see that throughout the social-emotional domain. One of the things that we did, I'll show you in a moment, is we did a crosswalk with the Rose standards. And we took our benchmarks and our standards and then crosswalked them with the Rose standards. And you'll be able to see visually how aligned they are. And of course, everything that we do, we do with the multi-tiered system of support in mind, okay? And then as Roseanne just mentioned, there are some state statutes that are relevant. The bullying statute would be the classic example of that.
And then our plans subsequent to the approval or down the road of these, next month of the standards, is to work with local districts around counseling curriculum assessments. It's, the intent of the standards and the indicators also is to provide a guide for districts and then for districts also to adapt them to fit their district, maybe their needs, and have them personalized or more localized. And then secondly, is an area of continued development on the Kansas Comprehensive School Counseling Program. On the KSDE website for school counseling, there's a document that addresses that. Thinking about counseling as a program and the different components of that and working to meet the needs of students in the three domains, academic, personal, or social-emotional and career. And then finally, our intent is to develop a best practices model or resource model that can be shared with counselors, to put together activities that fit with the standards and indicators to implement in schools as part of classroom activities or as part of activities that they would use with small groups. And maybe also then, not maybe, but also to make effective use of individual plans of study to facilitate students' college and career readiness.
As I mentioned, we did a crosswalk with the Rose standards. And this is a front page and kind of explains to folks exactly what the crosswalk is and also what the Rose standards are and also what, of course, the school counseling standards are. But I took a screenshot just to give you an idea. And this happens to be Rose Standard number four, sufficient self-knowledge and knowledge of his or her mental and physical wellness. Then I took the counseling standards. I didn't go down to the indicator level, otherwise it would have been 40 pages. But I took the benchmark and the standard. And you can see in the academic, the career, and the social-emotional domain, how many standards and benchmarks really relate to that specific Rose standard. Now, once the board approves, hopefully, the school counseling standards, we will take this and we'll develop further guidance for the field, okay?
And then finally, this quote we draw from two people who've done a good deal of work across the country in school guidance and counseling programs, or school counseling programs. And our hope is to work with counselors across the state with the standards as well as the comprehensive program model to implement programs more fully, to impact students and their parents and staff by active, involved counselors. As I mentioned, Geisberg and Henderson, Geisberg in particular is the father of school counseling programs across the country and one that we draw from in a number of activities in which we're involved.
This will give you an idea of our next step, some of the resources that we will make available to the field. We'll put these on our website. It'll be in part of the appendix to the standards. We'll also put that Rose Standards Crosswalk as part of the appendix. Here's our contact information. And if it pleases the Board, we will stand for questions.
Are there any questions, comments from the Board? Sally Cobble?
Of course I have one. Kent, I liked how they were distributed. And I really looked in when I previewed my board packet for that individual plan of study. And I appreciate it being worded the way that it's worded. My question is, now that we've gone through and have done this, how will that change the schools of education for the counselors? Will they need to be doing anything in a different way? And when are they up for review?
I'm going to defer to Dr. Huey, who represents Higher Ed. But I can honestly say this, to my knowledge, all of the approved programs teach the standards and are very involved in cooperating with the initiatives that we have ongoing here at the agency.
I wondered if they are working on individual plans of studies?
Well, I can speak from a course I teach where it's included in our master's program for school counseling. Because, you know, one of the things it seems to me, and there was a book written, oh, it's been a number of years ago, but the title of it was "Other Ways to Win." Ed Herr was one of the authors. He's at Penn State. And one of the things he talked about in there was the importance of helping students develop an individual plan of study. But, and it's not so much the outcome. The outcome's important, but the process leading up to that outcome's what's important. So it seems to me that that's an integral part of what we teach in working with folks, certainly not the only, but it's an integral part of what goes on. And then if I heard the other part of your question about evaluation or evaluating programs?
Yes, will it change the programs? Will they need to change?
Well, the... Well, I think programs will adapt in terms of using the new standards. But I think it was in the January board meeting where the program standards for school counseling were approved and those were recently updated as well and will drive what it is that graduate programs do, and certainly these will be a part of it.
And specifically, individual plans of study are addressed in those licensure standards that, by the way, Dr. Judy Huey would be the wife of Dr. Ken Huey. So I think we have that pretty well covered, okay?
Carolyn Campbell?
Thank you. I was just really curious.
I was just really curious. It said on there that you align the standards to Tennessee, Missouri, Iowa, and Nebraska. Well, I was really curious, is just what you found interesting in, like, Tennessee to...
Do you want to address that?
I probably would describe it not so much as aligning as using, using those resources to see if there are places where we need to enhance or strengthen what we're doing or adapt, so that, not that they're the same, but that we, we put it, make ours to the point where we say, these are the best we can get it, and we draw from another, a number of resources like those examples, as well as Kansas district ones.
One of the things that we'd like to have, remember, the original standards were approved in '06. Many of these states have approved newer standards, and what we wanted to do was to take a look and see if they had upgraded and if we could be inclusive of those upgrades into our work.
Deana Horst?
Thank you. I was just wondering, from a number of personnel needed to fulfill the standards that you've addressed, what do you perceive as being a need that we maybe currently do not have? The open positions that will suddenly appear, I guess?
Yeah. Well, currently, or as of last year, the counselor-student ratio was licensed, a school counselor and student ratio was 1 to 452 in the state of Kansas. The recommended ASCA ratio is, I believe, 1 to 250. That's an issue because we have a lot of kids that are probably falling through the cracks. We're working with schools and districts to try to help close those cracks, and SECED is an example of that. But, but that's a concern, and of course, I don't need to tell you folks about the financial situation and, and funding. So those are, those are all concerns, but I think 1 to 452, it's been consistent over the last five years at that ratio. So we've held the line, you know? We've been able to continue to provide services despite a lot of challenges, and I would hope that we would continue to do that.
So you don't perceive the standards that we're looking at today as creating any additional issues in that regard?
No, and point of fact, I get a lot of calls from schools where they can't find a licensed school counselor. This serves as a framework for them to provide the services. And really, that's the key. I mean, we know it's all about people, and good counselors will provide great services, but we need to provide that service, even if there isn't a licensed school counselor. Our first recommendation, according to QPA, is to provide a licensed school counselor, but we'll work with schools if they don't have one.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Huey and Mrs. Haberman, thank you, and Ken, thank you. And congratulations on being placed in the Hall of Fame. Great. And where is the Hall of Fame located?
It is an award that is presented at our state counseling conference.
Good. Congratulations, and thank you for your service. Ken, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, I'm going to ask the board's pleasure, do you want to take a five-minute break? Or do you want to move on? Want to take a short break? Okay, Janet says a short break. Why don't we come back here at 4:17?
Okay. Thank you, thank you, sir. First, before I get into the sheets that we just passed out and kind of walked through this so you kind of get a picture of what's going on, I want to discuss with you another problem that's going to come up when they return, and that is extending the Working After Retirement bill has not been approved yet. There's several bills, two or three bills. The current law expires on June 30th. We got about 2,500, 2,000, 2,500 people working after retirement, and probably close to half of those are special ed. And I just want you to know that if that bill's not extended in some form or another, and I think it will be, but I think I need to tell you, if that's not done, we've got a big, big problem. I talked to a group last night, and Danny Thornton was there from out at Northwest Kansas. And Brad, you may have helped refresh my memory, what'd he say? He had seven vacancies, and he also had, what, seven or eight retirees? Well, he had three, I mean, three retirees, and he has seven vacancies and he can't find applicants. We had a call the other day, out at Oakley, for example. They have three vacancies. One is ag, one is science, and one is English. And as of last week, he hadn't, he hadn't been out there quite a while, he didn't have one applicant. He thought he's going to get a voag teacher's applicant this week. But I just want you to be aware of that because we can't replace 2,500 teachers. The other thing is that worries me a little bit. We had several folks who've been going to the university job fairs, and one was Super Dad down at Frontenac, and he went to one, the Pittsburgh State. Jim, you may have been over there, but anyway, they had one recently there. He said that Oklahoma and Missouri was there in force and was passing out contracts. But we're not producing enough teachers to fill the vacancies and not being able, if we can't, if we had to turn loose those working after retirement. I just want to mention that to you because I think that, that is critical. And a year ago, we even had, it's normal to say, I think I mentioned this to the board one other time, we had some elementary positions, and that's unheard of. Super Dad told me that four, five years ago, he didn't even, if he sent out an ad and advertised, he might get 40 applicants. And last year, he had four or five, and three of them weren't, weren't even close being qualified. John Atman was out in your old area, out in Reno County, not far from yours, but anyway, it was Burton where that was. But anyway, we had another one up here north of town that had an elementary teacher that had trouble filling it, so, and that's unheard of for our state. Jim, you had one, didn't you?
I did, and I'm somebody from Pitt State midterm, really good, brand-new first teacher. That's why I got a job closer to home, so I'm holding him to keep him this semester.
So anyway, I want to mention, I think the legislature will respond, but if, if there's not something about working after retirement, it will, it'll create a lot of vacancies. Another one example, Mike Mathis, he has three industrial arts teachers, and all three of them are working after retirement. He said, "I can't find any. Just can't find them." So anyway, I wanted you to be aware of that, and I think the legislature will respond to that and, and help out, but I needed you to be aware that it has not passed yet. The printout. I want to walk through this, and if it seems complicated, that's because it is. Columns one through six. That's what the finance plan would be under the governor's allotment. Now, let me, the governor issued allotment, and sometime back, and he cut the base, and you'll notice in column two, he cut the base to $3,810, cut it $28 million. Everybody see that in column one? That's this year. The LOB state aid he funded, that's in column three. Column four, capital outlay state aid, he funded. And capers is funded, and the total is shown in column six. Capers, it, we sent out a check, it hits their bank and it pops back to capers, so schools can't spend that, they can't touch that. So that's this year, under the governor's recommendation. In Senate Bill seven, and the governor made this statement in his, and he hoped that the legislature reinstate this, and they did. Column seven, they reinstated the base back up to 3,852. That's what they started the year with. That's what the law said, 3,852. So column seven is the base of 3,852. We changed virtual state aid. Virtual state aid now is based on about $4,045, count the waiting, for a full-time student. Next year, it will go to 5,000 for a full-time student under the age of 19, under the age of 19. That's critical. And full-time students. If you're a part-time student next year, it'll be prorated based on $4,045. And if you are an adult, 19 and over, you'll get $933 for each class completed. You have to complete a course and you get $933. You have a maximum of six, six classes will get you $5,600. We'll get to the, we're going to change that a little bit when we get over to, wait a minute. What I just described for you was 15, 16. Let me, column eight, virtual for this year, state's current law. Okay, sorry about that. Column nine, we changed the capital outlay state aid. We lowered it about $19 million. So if you take a look at what the governor had in his plan for capital outlay state aid, and you compare it with what we've got in column 12, you will see a difference. Am I correct? Pardon? Yeah, you're going from column three to column nine. Nine will be less than column three. They cut 19 million now. Yeah, what I say? It's column four is capital outlay state aid, column nine is what it would be now, which the governor's rec was column four. Legislature and column, and Senate Bill seven is column nine. Everybody got that? Or I confuse things? All right, now, let's go now to LOB state aid. That's column three. Compare column three with column 10. Column 10 will be less. We cut 34 million out of there. So, so, and, so, column seven increased about 28 million. Column nine decreased 19 million. Column 10 decreased about 34 million. Are you okay there? Now, they wanted, they asked us to include this, and in column 10, you're not going to see a lot of numbers in column 10. John, you'll see several in your area. That's special mill levies. That's due to, hmm? Column 11? Yeah, column 11. It, that's due to special waitings that they received that all came from the local property tax. State has no money in this, but they will make the levy, send it to us, and we'll send it back. That includes cost of living, declining enrollment, and what's called ancillary facilities waiting, and that's for districts that are rapidly growing and building schools. But it's all, it's all property tax. Column 12 is capers, and you'll see capers for this year will be about the same as in column five, and column 12 will be about the same. Should be very, very, very close, within a couple dollars. Column 13 is the total. If you compare 12 and 13, there're going to be a difference of about $52 or $3 million difference. Well, it won't be that much because we cut 53, but we added 28. So you got $25 million difference in total. Now, that's for this year. Are we ready for next year? Next year, you get the general state aid that you got last year, and the goal was that it would be increased slightly as a result of the 20-mill levy. The 20-mill levy, due to growth and valuation, is supposed to produce 20 million. Consensus Revenue Group will look at that, but there's a concern about oil decline. We've talked about that. But the estimate we were asked to do was include that, and they said they'd make sure it was taken care of. But column 14, in most cases, will be very, very slightly higher than column seven. Now, I want to go back, and I described incorrectly the virtual changes. Virtual for a full-time elementary kid is $5,000 next year, and in the following year, it'll go to $5,600. Part-time kids, the first year will be 4,045 will be the base, so you prorate it. In the second year, it drops to 1,700. Part-time kids, and here's where the problem is going to come in. Two half-time kids will equal in 16, 17, will equal $1,700. It's 850 each. But if they were one full-time kid, you get $5,600. So it's geared towards full-time kids. All right. Column 16. If you look at column 16, compare it with column nine, and tell me what the difference We together? What's the difference? None. They're guaranteeing you in capital outlay state aid what you got this year. In column 17, 17 should be very, very close to column 10. LOB state aid. Special waitings, that's special mill rates, and that's, that's frozen, and you can't go up unless the law allows you to go up. There, there may be a slight increase in some selected districts, but it'll be very few and very little. Numbers 19. If you look at 19 real carefully, you're going to see a substantial increase in capers. Is that fair? Okay, let me try to explain that if I can. Under capers, money's a little tight, so the governor, his budget, he recommended we reduce capers this year, but he funded it next year. So you got a bump. We're down this year, and then you go up next year. Okay? So that's funded, and so you'll see a substantial increase in capers. Columns 21 is general state aid, and it may be up a hair more. And your proposed capital outlay state aid, LOB state aid, which is 23 and 4, they should be up, or should be the same, and capers will be up a little bit more. Now, here's, here's what they've got to do for schools, and this is a whole new concept. There is no waitings. No waitings. So when they do their budget, we got to redo the whole budget format, programming-wise. It's got to be redone, and it's got to be, we're going to try to lock it in. It's got to be redone, and it's got to be, we're going to try to lock it in, or if we don't do that, we're going to have chaos. When you get your general state aid, it'll go to the general fund. When you get your LOB state aid, it will go to the general fund. But when you record that, we're going to try to set it up where immediately you record it, it pops over to the LOB fund, because the law requires you, all the LOB state aid, it's got to go to the general, but it's got to come over to the capital outlay, or to the LOB fund. Goes to general, pops over to LOB. Now, the reason for that is, all the LOB state aid has got to go over to the LOB fund, but it's got to go through the general to get there. If you didn't do that, if your budget's frozen, and your state aid is down, and you leave it over in the general fund, you could hike the mill levy through the roof. With me? You could take the mill levy way up, because if you don't put your state aid over there. So, they locked it in. The LOB state aid has to go over to the LOB fund. Capers goes to the general fund of school districts and pops over to capers. We'll try to wire that. So, when it hits capers, it'll go over to capers fund. The other one, there's one more. Special aid. Special aid will go to the general fund, and we'll try to hardwire it. Once you get it, it'll pop over, go to the general fund and pop over to special aid, because it has to go there. There's, then there's one exception. And this is important. Capital outlay state aid may stay in the general fund, and you may spend that for whatever you want to. Any operating money. Any operating money. The mill levy for capital outlay constitutionally, you can't do anything with it. It stays in capital outlay. But the state aid can stay in the general fund, and you can use that as you desire. Start next year. Not this year, next year. Yeah, July 1. And Kathy, for some, that'll be significant. Now, Kim back here that don't get any state aid, don't want to make any difference. But those that do get state aid, but if you don't transfer it over, spend it in the general fund, you can legally do that. It's a board decision. So, the general fund is going to pop big time, because everything launders to the general fund. I just got through talking to a group a little bit in Wichita, and one of the first questions, well, what's the legal max letter? Will we send them a letter and tell them, under the law, here's how much you can spend? And I said, well, we'll still send you a letter, but you're going to decide how much to spend. It depends on what, whatever you budget. Whatever you budget, that's what you can spend. If you got the cash. You have to have the budget authority, and you got to have the cash. Now, there's one, there's one little piece that will, that will make a difference. All the interest on idle funds, except for capital outlay, has got to go now to the general fund. You know, the more an interest rate's are, it ain't going to make a lot of difference in most cases. Bond proceeds won't, but normal operating money, any interest will go to the general fund. There's another line item in there for state aid called extraordinary needs. Anybody that has extraordinary needs, you may go to the school, to the State Finance Council. That's led slave leaders in the financial side, and they'll include the led slave leaders near period. And you can ask for some of that money. This year, they set aside 4 million. Next year, a little over 12, and in the third year, 17, a little over. Now, when you go there, you better make sure that you done your homework, because those guys, they know what they're doing. So, if you lost, for example, and you were about broke, and you lost 150,000, go in and ask for 300, they're going to check it, look at it really, really careful. With me? So, we were asked to help put together the format, and then we turn it, we just turned it into the governors, to the governor's staff, and they will then look it over, and they'll, the governor will set a hearing, and they can invite them in for a hearing, or they can do it without a hearing. They can do, they get to make the choice whether they want anybody there or don't want anybody there. Now, it's a public meeting, but it may not, they may decide just to discuss it, vote on it, make a decision, or they can have a hearing and invite people in if they have questions. And the four of them have been received for 14, 15 so far. And I don't think there'll be very many more this year, but there'll, there'll be, there's 4 million, and they're asking for like 600. So, the legislative leaders will have to make that decision as to what they do. Is there any question, that? With people that work with this, we spent an hour and a half earlier today with them answering questions and be sure they understood it and all that. The rules are different. And they said, what happens if we overspend our budget? And I said, why would you do that? You set it. You set the budget, so why would you overspend it if you set it? And the other thing is, on this bill, you can carry cash over if you want to. But the things that are hardwired will be hardwired, and we, I don't know if we can pull all this off or not. The other piece, and I don't know what's going to happen, but on May 7, there's a hearing on this, and it was already scheduled prior to this, before the district court on school financing. It's really tough on us. We don't know, do you proceed? Do you not proceed? You, you got to start. We started a long time ago. If not, because it, to reprogram that whole thing, I think you get a private contractor to do it for a million, but we got to have that done in about another three, four weeks. Who's that? Oh, no, I just made that up. What I said by that, if you go to a contractor, you'd ask a contractor to, we don't, we don't do much contracting, they're too expensive. And the first thing you'd have to do, you'd have to explain it all out to them. You got to educate them on all the formulas, then they'd have to write it, and so, we'll do it ourselves. It's much more economical. But it would, I'm telling you, you go to, you go to the private market with a computer program, and it will surprise you in that arena.
Tim Porter has a question.
I'm glad you asked. Bond and interest state aid will be just like capital outlay state aid, and any, any bond issue before July 1 will be under the old law. Any bond issue after July 1 will be under the new law, and the percentages go down substantially after July 1. Now, I tell you what, and I've told the leadership this, anytime you threaten to do this, you scare people, and they go have more bond issues. Remember last year, we talked about this? We had 500 million of the bond issues that passed. This year, we had 11 bond issues on April the 7th. You want to guess how many passed? 11. 11 out of 11. That's unheard of near. There's seven more that we know about that will be, take place in June. In June, and some of those had to come to the board and some didn't. But there's seven more that will have, and when you, when, some was going to do this later, but when they found out their state aid was going down, they, they moved it up. They may not issue the bonds for a year or so, but they're having the election now, so they have the authority to do it, but it, it will go down. Now, I want you to think about this too, because I don't think a lot of thought through this very carefully. The new formula they got drops at, say, 15%. But on the average here, they're yonder, but when you when you get ready to have the elections, and you get a large number of them in this year, the effect of this new law won't hit for probably what, John? Three or four years? Bet three or four years, something like that, because some I know, they won't sell their bonds for six months to a year. Then it'll be, then they got to put the mill levy on, and we got to pay them, so it'll string, it'll be stringing out. The effect of this won't start hitting till probably, no, three to four years. Three to four years. And we had, I asked a group of about 200 people a couple hours ago. I said, how many people you know of having a bond issue next year after July, you know, next school year? Not one hand went up, because those that plan to have moved them all back because of the change in state aid law. So, anyway, that's where it is, but the effect on the bond interest state aid, it'll keep climbing at least for three or four years, at least. Okay, any other questions on that?
Oh, I have a question. I don't know if it's a fair question. But the number one question that I get from just about everybody, and I'm, I don't know how to answer it, is the block grant system. We hear that some districts is going to be the end of the world, and then from people who are promoting it, it's going to be better and better for everybody. It's more money. It's not enough money.
Most of the increase.
How do we answer?
Most of the increase, as you look at this, is in capers. There's a slight increase in general state aid. We declined in LOB and capital outlay, which we just went over. So, it depends on how it affects you, but the, the ones, the reason they set aside this special needs money? For example, I just talked to Marlon Berry last night, John, your, your area. He's, they're going to grow, they'll grow, nah, 200, 300 kids. It's not unusual. That's on the low side for them. Well, if it was all in one scattered throughout the district, it wouldn't be a big deal, but it's not. It will be in a development area where people are moving in with young families. And so, he may have to come under that hardship deal and go ask for some help. So, it depends on who you are, where you are. There's more money in it, but most of the increase is in capital, is in capers. Now, you may confuse things.
That really helped, Dan.
Yeah, thank.
I can't tell you.
Yeah, we sold a billion, or going to. We're going to sell a billion dollars' worth of capers. That money will go into the trust fund for capers. So, in doing that, it'll lower the rate, the capers rate, and the effect of that is yet to be determined. But I know that the numbers for capers will go down because the rate's going down, because they sold the bonds. And they want to lower the rates. And we've been, we were notified what the rates were going to be in next year and the year after. So, they're going down some. But how they decide to handle that is not known yet. But the so, the capers numbers you see here may or may not be accurate, because if the rate goes down, these numbers could go down. But people don't know that, because that decision hadn't been made yet, except we know the rate's going down. But how they may decide to handle that has not been determined. But printouts, you look at them after this year. This year, they're down a little bit because of LOB and capital outlay, general state aids what the law provides, but the next two years, it's, there's a teensy weensy increase in general state aid if they do what they're supposed to do. But capers takes a big jump. Well, many of them are talking about it, and it costs money, is capers.
Janet Watt has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dale, I heard this or read this somewhere. I just want to know if there's any validity to it. I heard that they were discussing or considering raising the 20 mills to 30.
There's a bill intended to do that, but it has not moved.
There isn't.
It has not moved. I, I would be surprised to see that kind of rise in the property tax. I'd be surprised at that, but it, there was a bill introduced. But it's lying peacefully.
Okay.
Hasn't moved.
Okay, and I'd just like to, I guess, make more of a statement than anything. You know, when you talk about those school districts, those 11 passing those bond issues, I've discussed this with several legislators, and they tell me, you know, people don't want their taxes increased, and I say, I agree. No one does. I certainly don't. But schools all over the state are passing bond issues. So, that tells me that people are willing to support money for their own schools.
Yes, April the 7th, 11 for 11 is just about unheard of.
Not only that, we passed all those LOBs.
Yep.
You know, prior to that, so I just think that speaks volumes.
After, whatever authority you got on July 1 in LOB, you're, you're locked in. Whatever it is, you're 30%, you're locked in, or 15, 16, 16, 17. The budget's locked in. I just passed out something, and I want you to know about it and, and see if you. This is in the mega bill. And this may have, don't know this, this may have come as a follow-up from Lexia 5. But it has to be, we have to send it out for a request for proposal. And we don't, the, the RFP is already here. It's already written. And that's, well, I'd put it in the state format, but I wanted you to know about this. It's, you'll notice it's 2.1 million. But unless somebody strenuously exists, I'm worried about timeframe. There's some timeframes when this has got to be done so schools can plan. Whenever the law, if this, if this stays in there, and it's in the big mega bill, and the law becomes effective, and it, once it's published, we would, we would like to send this over to purchasing, and this may be first of June. And then what we'll do, once we get the proposals, we'll bring it to the board for, for approval, whatever the options are. But I was trying to shortcut the timeframe, because if, if we come in and, I want to tell you about it ahead of time, because it's, the, all the stipulations is all there. And we have, notice the last line on the second page? Last line, second page? See, if, if we're there, and we don't get the mega bill through, and it's got, and some of this will have to be maybe printed, some of it may just go into effect July 1. But this, we got to notify, make the announcement by no later than August 15th, then to say that. So, whenever it becomes effective, unless somebody objects, we will, they, they were already working on it, Scott Smith Incorporated, we will send this to state purchasing and ask them to submit it out in a request for proposals. Then we get the proposals, and we'll ask two members of the board to set in to, with the purchasing people to review it. Is there any questions, comments on that?
Kathy Bush?
Yeah, I do. On the first page, it talks about that this is a, such program shall be available to all Kansas public school students in grades pre-K through 8. Online-delivered, interactive, computer-adaptive reading assessment and research-based intervention for both use at home and at school. Is that research-based intervention? Is that research peer-reviewed, or is the research done by the own company?
I don't know the answer to that. You probably, I mean, sincerely, you probably know more about that than I do, but that's what's in the law.
Well, I, you know, it should be a peer-reviewed research, is what it should be.
I imagine there was somebody that may have helped put this together.
Yeah, yeah, it reads like it.
Yeah. But.
And then, is this going to be a required? Because a lot of school districts, you know, different kids need different interventions.
No, this will best be a permissive option, it's not mandatory. Not a mandate. Not a mandate to any school district. It's in the mega bill, and if you don't object, when the bill becomes effective, because there isn't much we can do till then, which is going to be pretty late, I think. It could be up in June, pretty handily, time it gets, becomes effective, at least latter part of May. By then, we'll send it to purchasing and try to get people to see who is interested, and we'll bring it back to the board, and we'll have a couple of board members set in on the review with purchasing.
Yes. Dina Horst?
Thank you. So, this is somewhat of a grant for school districts for a reading program that is being selected by the state board.
Correct.
You got it.
They set the criteria, you select the contractor.
We decide who, who gets the contract. We decide who, who gets the contract. And unless you choose that program, you don't get to have a piece of that $2,100,000.
But if they, if this, whoever the contractor is that bids on this, if they meet the criteria, and we hope there's more than one, then the board will then have to make the decision who they choose.
Pretty narrowly written.
And the person, I happened to be in that room where they brought this up right before they adjourned. And the person that was reading, that made the motion, I couldn't even know his name back to the words.
Sally Cobble?
Mr. Chairman, I, um, I might need legal advice on this. We have never made it. I mean, we only do standards. We don't choose curriculum. Now, are we choosing money that can be used for any local school to do curriculum if they want to, or they have to do this curriculum? And would we not be overstepping the local school board's authority?
One way you could say, they would not have to participate. They choose to participate.
Well, I know it's voluntary and everything, but... Well, then, I guess, I don't want that to come back on us as the ones choosing a curriculum that they can have. If the legislature wants to stick their neck out and tromp all over local schools, that's for them to do. But I don't want to tromp on local schools.
Well, having seen, having seen this for the first time, I, you know, reading it just off the cuff here. First question I have is if we were able to, I said we did, we went through all this. How do we, what timeline is there to get going? I mean, I mean, it's late in the year to do this. And I guess one of my questions, apparent, are schools already doing these? I mean, is this a...
Well, there's some, there's some districts doing a program very similar to this right now. That's true, but...
Alexia is all over the place.
You what?
Alex, is it Lexia?
Yeah, that's, there's, Lexia 5 is out there, they're doing it, and they're scattered.
They're all over.
They're all over, yeah, right. And, but this is in the mega bill. And again, they set the criteria. We choose the best contractor to deliver it. And that's about it.
But I'm just a bit confused about getting it now and getting it in this form. Lexia's already out there. Why are we all of a sudden invited to the party?
I think that there was some concern that last time it wasn't bid. This time, they wanted to make sure that whatever they choose went through the bid process like everybody else. I don't know that. Somebody else might know that, but I don't know how many vendors there are. I really don't. I don't have many vendors. Right? You got any idea? I don't either.
Yeah, and Dale, have we done this in the past?
Usually what happens, if there's something like this, they'll appropriate the money and then let the state board decide how to spend it. And so, there's probably examples, but normally you'll choose anything related to curriculum and write the specs for it. This case, they wrote the spec, but you get to choose the contractor. It's that simple. Yeah.
Ken?
Is there a limitation to, or do we determine what contractors meet the specs? Or do we determine?
Well, first is, no, first is, you put out the specs, and whoever's interested will bid on it.
That's normal.
That's normal. And then, then there'll be a committee put together, made up of probably, maybe one staffer and from purchasing, and a couple of board members, and maybe one other person. They'll review the application, decide who the best contractor is. And then, then it'll come back to the board.
Ken?
So, but my question is, in this case, if, let's say two contractors met the specs of this amendment.
Mm-hmm.
Are we called upon to decide between those two, or are...
Yes. Yes. You decide who's, who do you think would do the best job?
Show me where it says that in here.
No, that's the purpose of the request for proposal. That's the whole purpose. Yeah. When you go, when you go to get a request for a proposal, you go through purchasing, follow their rules, and you have to make the decision as to which would be the best. They don't put that hardly in anything like that when you do a request for a proposal.
Says the program shall be correlated to at least one of the commonly-used reading assessments, such as, okay.
And we just file the normal request for proposals through purchasing, and then the board then will, may have to make the final decision who they choose. That meets, if they don't meet the criteria, it won't get to you.
Well, typically, when one writes something like this, you pretty much know who you want. I mean, I want someone 5'6", I want a size 7 shoe, and I, you know, it'll put you right down and narrows it down.
That's, that's been known to happen?
Yeah, well, and whether it's vehicles or, you know, I've been through purchasing on other items, you know, and this, you can set the parameters up in such a way that really, it'd be a surprise if somebody else got it. If you have somebody in mind. Okay, Carol and Campbell?
Thank you. My question is, who proposed this amendment?
It was, I think, originated in the Senate. In the Senate, I think, I think they were on Senate Ways and Means Committee.
Oh, even better.
Yeah, I think it came through the Senate and through Senate Ways and Means, I believe. Yep.
Not education?
No. No. No.
What's that? Oh, now I'm starting to remember stuff.
All right.
Okay, Kathy Bush?
One more question. It says that this is an interactive computer adaptive reading assessment and research-based intervention for use both at home and at school. What if these families don't have a computer at home?
That'd be, that, that would, that could be an issue. This is, where's I was trying to see?
And at school.
It's home and school.
Both, for use both at home and at, the other thing too is, if the contractor, this has been known to happen, they, sometimes I know they've provided a computer in a case like that. That's happened in virtual. They provide the computer.
So I'm coming back to my, you know, you mentioned a few moments ago that, that something, something like this is already out there, and they didn't bid it correctly two years ago?
No, no, it, no, it was just placed in the statute.
Oh, it's placed in the statute.
It was just added in the statute by the House Appropriations Committee folks. They put the money, put it in, put the money in, put a proviso in, and named the company. That was it.
Okay, which sounded like a surprise at that time. But now, this is significantly less money than it was two years ago.
Yes, but they also know how much they would spend each year. And since this is a proviso, it's only good for one year.
This is one year?
That's right.
Okay. Again, I just say that this is awfully fast. You know, I mean, just, it sounds like a shotgun wedding.
What I'm worried, yeah, what I'm most worried about, and I understand that, but what I'm most worried about is, we've got to move on this the minute the bill goes into effect in order to comply with those, that deadline. And I, and we don't know when that is, but I bet you it'll be up in latter part of May.
Do we have any choice in the matter?
Not much.
What is the bill?
It's a mega bill, the big appropriation bill.
Okay.
It's, it's like 400 pages, yeah, it's a big mega bill.
Anybody asking for this in the field? I mean, it's a good program. I mean, there's, you know, but...
I don't, I've not had, I have not had a lot of inquiries or questions, although I think those, some people that are using it are, appreciate it.
Yeah.
And think it's worked well.
Yeah. Yeah, there's nothing wrong with the program.
Anyway, so I think this is probably...
I feel like I'm being used.
Continue that concept.
Thank you. Okay, all right.
Next one?
Janet Waugh, I'm sorry, we'll go with Janet and then...
Okay, I want to talk about something else.
Okay.
About this.
All right.
Is that okay?
Well, I don't, go ahead, you're on, you get the stage, go ahead.
I can wait. No, the thing I wanted to ask you, it was, it's kind of off of this, but I'm, as you know, I'm on the policy committee, and we met today, and we're gonna discuss policy tomorrow on travel. And I had been asked by the board to know how, where, how our money was determined in our travel allowance every year. So could you explain that to the whole board, that way everyone would know?
We, we give you preferential treatment. I mean, in honest, you look at it, the last few years, and I think that'll be discussed tomorrow. Usually if we get cut, we don't cut you. You know, really, be honest about it. And the, if you take a look at it in the last, what, five years, four years, something like that, you'll be up, if you take the assessment out for the agency, you'll be up considerably more than the agency will be. But what it's due to is, we try to be more than fair with the board. And the bottom line is, the theory was, we started out with the board, was that you'd get up or down based on the same percentage as the agency. Well, we run out, maybe a little intestinal, lack of intestinal fortitude, and we haven't done that. But we're okay. So we, a lot of times when the agency goes down or something, why, we didn't cut the board. And you'll see the numbers tomorrow. Because what happened, you can't do that and do your job. And the other issue you got with that is, a lot of times in the last, what, five years, we raised the mortgage rate, and the per diem has gone up. So you do that, so... We try to, we try to make sure that the board don't get cut. Exception one, one, maybe, is there any cuts at all? We are cutting them at all in the four, five years? So, anyway, we, we try not to do that, but the idea when we started out was when the, and the board did this, wasn't us. Board said that we'll go up or down based on the percentage of the agency, but we haven't done that. And that's our fault, not yours. We didn't want to cut you.
Thank you. I did, the board just simply wanted to know. I appreciate the information.
The numbers, she's got...
Good information.
She'll add the numbers tomorrow.
And?
The letter I gave you. Passed out. The chairman of the House Ed Committee would like to send this letter out. They had, they've had a bill on financial literacy, and they finally decided after numerous meetings, and some of you may sit in on some of those, to not pass the bill, but send a letter under the chairmans of the House Ed Committee and the chairman of the state board. They drafted the letter. We come up with the stationary and so forth, and so forth. They agreed to it. The question is, do you? And this was written by legislative staff and Representative Highland. It's not a problem for us.
I think that would be a wise thing to do.
Not a problem.
Because I'm seeing it for the first time as well.
Yep. Well, we've only got, had it in the last two or three days, but things are happening rather rapidly right now.
Well, I...
See, see if I got everything. One other thing I need to share with you, and it's, I feel kind of bad because I can't give you much on the budget except that one bill. Because the mega bill hadn't passed, but the, remember the Microsoft certification program?
Yes.
The Microsoft certification program has been taken out of the board of region budget and given to us.
And how much is that?
$500,000. The Microsoft Certification Program Academy, they took it out of the board of regions and gave it to us. And Jay Scott's kind of ramrods that, and so, we got some ideas that we think we can save a little bit of money and do a better job on that. And we're, we're working on that, and we'll have a proposal before July 1.
It's a good program.
It is. It's a very good program. We're using this year, in all honesty, a contractor which we needed to do the first year, but we're not sure we need to do that again. We could probably save money by just hiring somebody to do all that, and do all the training and all the, do all that, cheaper than paying them. Because we're, I don't know what they're getting, because it's all laundered through them, but we just work with CertiPort who gives the tests, and, and we think we, and, anyway, we think there's hope there, that, that'll happen. Okay, I've told you probably about all I know, except let me mention it's been passed, except Senate Bill 7. But we discussed about homeschool students participating in high school activities. The House tabled it in committee. The background checks, all the Lishinger and the Lishinger required for non, or classified people, and all that, every five years, that failed on the Senate floor. So those two bills, it appears to be gone. And the big issue over there now is, there's two things. Is the money to fund the programs they've adopted, and the second one is it's working after retirement. Because I'm telling you, some special ed co-ops are sweating blood and tears. It's what they do if it's not continued. Because that's probably half of them. The other thing is, and I don't know what the answer is going to be or what the issue is, but everybody's looking forward to the consensus revenue estimates that will come out probably next Monday evening. And remember, the governor proposed some increase in, what, sin taxes and a few things? And is that enough? Not enough? Will it pass? Will it not pass? That remains to be seen. But the shortfall on revenue, we should know next Monday night. And that'll be very, very, very important where we are. Any other words of wisdom?
You've done us well.
Mr. Chairman, if you'd be as kind, come and send it stupid without bending to make a decision what you want to do on that letter and whatever, but that came to the House Ed Committee Chair. They wrote it and wanted us to, all the thing we had to do is, if the board agreed, you sign it, and then we'd send it out to schools. So whatever the board decides, so be it.
We'll talk about it tomorrow.
All right, real good. And is there anybody, anything other words of wisdom on the reading program? So whenever it ever becomes law that we couldn't start the process? If so, you need to tell us that, but if not, to do that, follow that law, we have to, we got to move on it as soon as it becomes effective.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is consent on Item D, Act on State Pre-Kingdom Program Grants for 2015-16. Jim Porter has asked to pull that, and we vote on that separately. So I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda minus Item D. Kathy? So moves. Janet seconds. Any discussion? If none, seeing none, hearing none, please raise your right hand if you approve the consent agenda. I see nine. Opposed? Oh, abstaining, okay. Nine-four, and Steve Roberts abstaining. Then on, and that passes. Item D, Act on the State Pre-Kingdom Program Grants for 2015-16. Jim Porter has excused himself. Jim Porter has excused himself, recused himself. So is there a motion? Carolyn Campbell, seconded in by Deana Horst. All those in favor, please signify raising your right hand. I see eight votes for and opposed, abstaining. Steve Roberts abstains. So it's a eight, zero, one. No. Well, it's two, you count that as abstention? Okay, two abstentions.
One recusal.
One recusal and one abstention. Okay. Then we move to the next item, which is executive session.
I move that we go into executive sessions for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the individual or individuals to be discussed, and consultation with attorney, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, in order to protect the privilege and the board's communications with the attorney on legal matters. This session will last no more than...
10 minutes.
10 minutes, with, and no action will be taken during this session. We would like to invite our commissioner and the attorney to join this executive session. We will start at 5:20.
Want to take a break first?
When, when y'all want to start?
But...
What time, 5:20?
5:15. 5:15?
It's 5:15 right now.
That's why, that's why I said...
As soon as we can clear the room.
In a minute.
We have a motion on the floor?
Second.
Seconded by Jim Porter. Those in favor of going into executive session, please signify by raising your right hand. That's a 10-0, and opposed, 10-0.
What, what time did you say, you said?
Just as soon as we can clear the room, that way it will just start the 15 minutes.
Oh, okay.
Did you say 10 or 15?
He said 10.
10.